Okay, we're going to get started this morning. It is Women's History Month, which I have declared in the City of Oklahoma City, but it is, of course, the case around the country and around the world. And Councilwoman Nikki Neistat suggested that we invite Pastor Christine Byrd in honor of that to do our invocation. And so Pastor, if you wouldn't mind, and following that, Councilwoman Meg Salyer will lead us in the pledge.
If you would bow in reverence for just a few moments. Holy God, my Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our community. I pray for those who are in office that they govern this community, and they govern it wisely and godly, discerning all that is before them. And thank you for those that have served that are about to leave on another journey, but we thank you for their service. Continue to bless and protect our firefighters and our police officers, and all those who serve in many ways, in many avenues, and many areas. We thank you for them. And as we gather together this day, we praise you for this day and your purpose. Reset our agenda that it is your agenda, and that it reflect your will for Oklahoma City, and that we continue to have a respect of people regardless of their gender, their faith, and their race. Shift our perspectives to seek peace above all things, and let your peace rain down and continue to rain down on Oklahoma City. Thank you for our mayor and our city council. Thank you for them. Guide their wisdom and enlarge their territory. We thank you for this day, for this day was not promised, but we thank you for allowing us to wake up. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, which we will begin with items from the office of the mayor. We have several. I will note that we're going to bookend our meeting today with honoring of our departing council members. So Dr. Shadid will handle his resolution at the end of the meeting, near the end of the meeting, under items from council. But we will begin right up with Councilwoman Salyer. So as I make my way to the front, I think I'll ask her to join me. Well, we well remember that at the last meeting, you chose your second-to-last meeting to honor some of the people who've inspired you in your public service, but today, we celebrate you. And a lot of people are here, including, I think, all those people you honored last week. It was really the least they could do. Well, I think we know a lot about you, Meg, but nevertheless, we're going to review a little bit. This is your life, and so we are going to, we're going to, we're going to ask the clerk to read a resolution.
Whereas Margaret S. Meg Salyer was elected as Ward 6 council member on November 4, 2008, the only council member ever to be elected on the same day as a presidential election. Whereas Councilwoman Salyer became the ninth woman elected to the city council by winning the special election to fill the vacated Ward 6 seat. She was re-elected to a full term on March 1, 2011 with a 63 percent of the vote, and again on March 3, 2015 with 53 percent of the vote. Whereas during her 11 years of service, Councilwoman Salyer served on the city sports facilities oversight board, Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, Public Property Authority, Environmental Assistance Trust, Municipal Facilities Authority, Economic Development Trust, Fairgrounds Trust, Convention and Visitors Commission, Civic Center Foundation, Marietta Gardens Foundation, MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board, Boathouse Foundation Board of Directors, Greater Oklahoma City Sports Consortium, Regional Transit Task Force, Wheeler Development District Review Committee, and the City Council Financing Capital Improvement Committee, the Economic Development Committee, and the Social Services Committee. Whereas Margaret S. Meg Salyer served this community in many capacities beyond council member, she was the first woman elected as president of the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City, served as a trustee of Oklahoma City University, and contributed her time and expertise to St. Anthony Hospital, United Way, Leadership Oklahoma, Kirkpatrick Foundation, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics Foundation, Junior League of Oklahoma City Downtown School Site Selection Committee, Oklahoma Partnership for School Readiness Board, Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc., and the Allied Arts Foundation. Whereas Councilwoman Salyer has been recognized for her community service, earning the Urban Pioneer Award from the Plaza District, the Pathmaker Award from the Oklahoma City County Historical Society, the Neil Horton Award for Downtown Revitalization from Downtown OKC, and the Mary Baker Rumsey Lifetime Achievement Award presented by the Junior League of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma Women's Hall of Fame, Journal Record Woman of the Year, and Oklahoma City Friday Most Powerful Women. Whereas Councilwoman Salyer was a champion for those experiencing homelessness, a participant in the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness in Washington, DC, the author of legislation to fund public works of art in city buildings, the author of legislation increasing public safety for solicitors in the median, established the Automobile Alley Main Street program, attended a Leadership Institute for Vacant and Abandoned Properties at Harvard Law School, assisted in the Stockyards and Capitol Hill Revitalization, developed criteria for use of balconies in downtown design districts, supported a funding plan for the downtown sealed railroad safety corridor, encouraged the state to fund the Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics, supported healthy food and beverage options in vending machines in city buildings. She met with numerous neighborhoods in her ward regarding the home sharing, promoted parklets in the city, Sunday bus service, passage of better streets, safer city, and MAPS III. Whereas Councilwoman Salyer has been an inspiration to all women, not only in the community but in City Hall, for her ability to perform her duties as president of Excel Financial Staffing, a mother to Margaret, and her generosity to the community with her time and commitment to make Oklahoma City a better and safer place to live and play. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Margaret Meg Salyer for her 11 years of dedicated service to the residents of Ward 6 and to the City of Oklahoma City, and we wish her all the best.
A.B., before we allow you to speak, we are certainly going to give you that opportunity, but we might, we might want to go around the horseshoe and see if anybody has anything to say. Mark?
Sure. Couple of things. I learned so much from you, and one of the most important things I learned from you was to listen, to listen to people, to what they had to say, analyze the problem, and then to explain it to us on the horseshoe. You did an incredible job. But one of the things that I'm so proud of you for more than anything, when people come up to the horseshoe and speak to us, it's probably their first time, many times, to deal with the city. And you have this unique quality to make people smile, to make people laugh, and make it a wonderful experience that they spend with their maybe only time with the city. And so I admire you very much for that. And as the minister said today in the prayer, you're about to embark on a new journey. And I think personally, the best is yet to come. Like Jim Couch said, I'd like to write a few more chapters in my life. I can't wait to read the next few chapters in your book of life. Thank you for all you've done for me. God bless.
Ms. Meg, it has been an honor to know you, at least for the last few months, sitting here with you. It meant a lot when I was running, and you reached out to me, and you said, "I just want to know who you are." And to have someone reach out that had no clue who you were, you weren't even a voter in my ward, but you still wanted to know who I was, that meant something to me, and I appreciate you for that. I also commend you for enjoying Justin Timberlake with us, and shaking it good, and enjoying that. But also, one of the things that I will take away is the fact that all three of us, when we're here, we dialogue together, but at the same time, there was something that was going on within your ward, and you helped, you discussed it with me, and I told you what I thought of. And you said, "Honey, vote your conscience." And I appreciate you for that. Thank you so much. And I admire you as a young lady in this seat, and I thank you for all of your service as a woman in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Meg, thank you for all of your service. You probably have the most difficult ward to serve. You've got residential areas that span from some challenging neighborhoods to some very affluent neighborhoods, and at the same time, you've got basically all of the central business district to work with. So I admire you, and I appreciate all you've done, and I've learned so much from your efforts here on the council, and we'll certainly miss you very much. Thank you.
Well, Meg, I want to say to you that I really appreciate all the years that we've been able to work together, and I just admired you and watched your leadership, and you're just such a catalyst that, that when we're working through a problem, or we're trying to work through and get something resolved, you're such a catalyst to progress. And just so grateful in how you've done that, and what was read in the resolution is such a testament to your success and your leadership in the organization. We're going to really miss you around here.
Meg, it's really been a great pleasure to work with you. I'm certainly glad you served on the council, so I got to know you. And I know I speak for all of our other office attorneys, including Amanda and Wiley. We really are sorry to see you go, and good luck, best of luck to you.
Councilwoman, thank you for your service to our city, and thank you personally for helping me to maybe better understand some of these deals that we go through up here. You've been a great sounding board for me to be able to come to and ask questions and hopefully have a better understanding of what it is that we're trying to accomplish. I've really admired the way that you handle yourself up here on the shoe, especially when I've seen you have to make a decision that concerns your ward, that there is not going to be a good answer. And you work through it, and you do it with the respect of our citizens and the respect of everyone else on the shoe. So thank you.
It's been a privilege to serve with you, Meg, and to learn from you. Your service on the city is exemplary. I wish you the best as you go forward. And a lot of people don't realize that you had to reach across the Hudson River to embrace a New Jersey guy, you being from New York, and you did that with dignity and honor. I appreciate it. God bless.
I'm just, I'm just glad that my resolution's not being read right after yours. I wish people could see, like, our work in the Social Services Committee and your breadth of knowledge, the nonprofits, and it's incredible what you know and what you've done for those with the least among us, and, and those are the ones that need the most. And you, your command and your knowledge is incredible. Also, if I was on this council and everyone on this horseshoe was, was a woman except maybe the city clerk, I'd, I'd feel uncomfortable. And I know that maybe in the last couple of years, it's more in vogue for women to run for office, but it certainly wasn't when you did, when you stepped up. And you've, you've paved the way for so many others, and you've changed things in that regard, and very grateful for that.
Meg, I've really enjoyed getting to know you the last six years. Some of your character traits that I appreciate the most are, is your humility, your positive attitude, even when there isn't a lot of positive things going on, the fact that you are continually focused on compromising and trying to bring everybody to the table and make everybody happy. It's a trait that I don't have, and so I really, really appreciate seeing it from you. And I think, most importantly, I think you represented your constituents well. So thank you for your service. Thank you. Yeah.
Councilwoman, it's hard not to be struck when we read that resolution with just the sheer volume of things that you were engaged in. I mean, it truly is so true that people like you just make the world go around, you know? We could not have accomplished all that we have in this city without, I should say, people like you, but more specifically, you. You played such a key role in so many things that happened in our city. It's worth noting that with your departure, we're now down to one council member who was in elected office at the time of the passage of MAPS III. So if it's not quite the end of an era, it's, it's getting near the end of an era, and that is a generation of leaders in our city who were here for so many important things, really the full blossoming of our city's renaissance. So I think we all owe you a debt of gratitude, and the least we can do is pass this resolution. So, got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Cast your votes? Passes unanimously. We also, it's somewhat traditional, I mean, we have nothing better to do with it, so we give it to the person. We give you your nameplate. You actually have two. I'm sure we'll give you the other one as well, but this was the one you used during those periods, probably more than one, when you served, you served as the vice mayor. And in fact, you were my first vice mayor. So thank you for all your service, and we would love to hear a few words from you.
And a few it will be, because I'm not sure I can get a single one out. A couple of things to my colleagues on the council. Thank you so very much. I hope you can all see why this last 11 years of service has been so meaningful, to have the opportunity to serve with colleagues that care so much about what happens in this city has been an honor and a privilege. Before I forget, and if I tried to thank everybody that I need to thank, we would be having peanuts for lunch, because that's what happens when we run late. But there are four people that I specifically want to thank. One, Megan Law, would you please stand up? Megan was my finance manager. She's, Frances filed all those reports that we have to file on a regular basis. She really has been my partner in crime in this effort, and Megan, I couldn't have done it without you, and appreciate it so much. Second person, yeah, please give her a round of applause. The second person that needs no introduction to anybody in this room is Debbie Martin. And Debbie, I'm not going to be able to say anything for fear of not being able to finish, but I hope you know how important your being with me on this journey has been. We started it together, Debbie and I have been friends for a lot longer than I've served on this council, and it was with her guidance and support that we were able to accomplish as many of the things as we were. So know how much I love you, Debbie. Thank you very much. And Randy and Boyd, wave your hands. Thank you, guys. I don't know what I'm going to do. I was just thinking how clear my inbox is going to be. Not going to be getting all these emails, but you guys, you know, are the support behind what we all do, and your contact with citizens and the way you're able to help is so important. And lastly, two groups. There are so many of the city's incredible employees. We have almost 4,800 employees today. The greatest joy I've had for this 11 years is working with you all. We have really had to roll up our sleeves and do a lot of important work in, in 11 years, and I have never once been let down by a city employee. You really clearly care about what you do and recognize how important it is to be a representative of the city. And then all my friends that have had to listen and guide and, you know, allow me a few minutes to probably need some peace. So I appreciate you all being here more than I can say. This has been the greatest honor of my life. It was completely unexpected. Chief, I'm looking at you over here. Thank you for everything. This was not part of a journey that I had planned, but it is an incredible one, and I would encourage anybody that ever thinks about serving your city to do so in whatever capacity you can. It is incredibly rewarding, and you will, as in most things, you'll receive back much more than you give. So I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. We'll seem somewhat anticlimactic now, but we do have a couple other proclamations that we need to, we need to present. And so I would ask the folks, my friends from Litter Blitz and Oklahoma City Beautiful, Lisa and your team to come forward. Mother Earth. Litter Blitz, an annual event here in Oklahoma City. It's been a great opportunity for people to channel their desire to make our city more beautiful, and it certainly makes an impact every year. And to hear a little bit more about it, I'd ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas litter is a critical factor in our city's economic health, and a clean city reduces taxpayers' costs. To remove the litter and attracts new businesses. Whereas Oklahoma City Beautiful and the City of Oklahoma City are teaming up for Litter Blitz 2019. Litter Blitz 2019 is an effort to clean up area neighborhoods, parks, streets, and businesses to help beautify Oklahoma City. Whereas neighborhood civic church and business groups can register their teams to pick up litter on a date they choose. Whereas each team will receive a packet with free trash bags, gloves, and tips for a safe and successful cleanup. Last year, over 10,000 volunteers participated in the community cleanup, and over 171,000 pounds of trash was collected from our public spaces. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Litter Blitz 2019 in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to help combat litter in their parks, schools, neighborhoods, and other locations throughout our community.
Thank you. Lisa, you guys do such incredible work, and we really depend on you. I mean, if you didn't exist, we'd have to create you. So we would love to hear a few thoughts from you and your team about Litter Blitz this year.
All right, we're just so excited to get started again. We've already got volunteers out picking up trash for us. This is something we do every year. And to, I'm going to introduce Kristin Milburn. She's our program manager that makes this all happen, and she'll tell you how to get involved.
Hi, I'm Kristin. I'm the program manager at OKC Beautiful. I'm joined here by my coworker Kat Gant and our lovely board member Cynthia Brenley, dressed as Mother Earth today to tell you about Litter Blitz. We're really honored to be partnering with the city again this year for litter cleanup. We know it's so important to economic development and to citizen well-being to have clean and beautiful cities, so we hope that you will join us this April. You can go to our website at okcbeautiful.com and sign up there. We'll provide you trash bags and gloves and guidance if you don't know where to go, but if you've noticed a street, or a median, or a fence line, or a park near your neighborhood, or church, or place of work that needs a little love, we're, we're happy to help you and wish you all the best.
All right, let's hear it for everybody at OKC Beautiful. All right, we have one more proclamation, this one for child abuse prevention, and so maybe we can get Sheri and everybody else up here that came out this morning. All right, it is going to be an April Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we would love to learn a little bit more about that. So I'd, I'd ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas Oklahoma City's future prosperity depends on nurturing the healthy development of the more than 166,000 children currently living, growing, and learning within our community. Whereas research shows that safe nurturing relationships and stimulating stable environments improve brain development and child well-being, while neglectful or abusive experiences and unstable or stressful environments increase the odds of poor childhood outcomes. Whereas the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe costly and lifelong problems affecting all of society, including physical and mental health problems, school failure, and criminal behavior. Research also shows that parents and caregivers who have social networks and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. Whereas individuals, businesses, schools, and faith-based and community organizations must make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development. and educational development and competency of all children. During the month of April, the City of Oklahoma City Prevent Child Abuse Oklahoma Parent Promise, the Exchange Club of Oklahoma City, and the Downtown Oklahoma City Exchange Club, in collaboration with their citywide partners, will be engaging individuals and communities in a coordinated effort to prevent child abuse and neglect by promoting awareness of healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and the types of supports families need within their communities. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Oklahoma City, and encourages all citizens to recognize that prevention starts with each of us.
Thank you. Well, obviously, the work done by all the groups mentioned here is critically important to the health of our community. And to say a few words and maybe introduce who's with you today, I'd like to introduce Sheri Fair, the executive director of Prevent Child Abuse Oklahoma, Parent Promise.
Thank you. We're very pleased to be here today, and first of all, we'd really like to thank you for all the support that you've always given the children of Oklahoma City and all of us that do the work every day on a daily basis to protect them. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it's an opportunity for all of us to realize that just as there are a number of us up here, it takes everyone, and it's everyone's responsibility to keep our children safe so that they can all grow up in loving, safe, and nurturing homes and grow into productive adults, because they are our future. And I just want to mention that I have up here our immediate past president and founding board member of Parent Promise, interim commissioner of health, Tom Bates, and it has been a breath of fresh air that we've been able to foster a much closer partnership with the Health Department since he's been here. And Beth Martin works with him there. And our program manager, Shawna Norman. And we have one of our Exchange Club members here, Adam Bush. And I just want to recognize there are a number of people that came here to support us, because they also work either for the Health Department or are providers for child abuse prevention in the community. Can you all just stand up and be recognized, or wave your hands, or whatever you're comfortable with? And one last thing, for those of you who didn't dress like all of us today, you'll have the opportunity to do so on Friday, April 5th, because that is Wear Blue Day in order to raise awareness for child abuse prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for everybody who works in this important area. All right, that concludes the presentations. I'll make my way back to my seat. This is sometimes the time that people leave. You're certainly welcome to stay, but... We are still on office as a mayor. As previously stated, item A will be handled later in the meeting, so that brings us to item C, notification of Larry McAtee to serve as vice mayor for the six-month period beginning on April 9th. Entertain a, are we in a motion for that, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's not official until we vote. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item D, this is a resolution approving travel and reimbursement of travel-related expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting. This occurs every summer. This year it is in Honolulu, Hawaii, from June 28th to July 1st. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B. We can take them with one motion. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And item five, request for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. So on page 15, we have item seven, AW-8. We're going to strike this item. We need to make a correction on that item. On page 24, under dilapidated structures, it's 9N1. Item H, we'll strike that item because the owner has removed the structure. On page 24, under unsecured structures, item 9O1D, 1406 West Park Place, we're going to strike that item to renotify. On item F, 5420 Rockwood Avenue, the owner is occupied. Item G, 3610 Spring Lake Drive, the owner has, we need to renotify the owner. On item J, 832 Northeast 20th Street, the owner has secured. Item K, 316 Southwest 23rd Street, the owner has secured. And item R, 1105 Southwest 41st Street, the owner has secured. On page 25, item 9P1, under abandoned buildings, we're going to strike these items. Item E, 1406 West Park Place, to renotify. Item G, 5420 Rockwood Avenue, the owner is occupied, or it's an occupied structure now. Item H, 3610 Spring Lake Drive, is to renotify the owner. Item L, 832 Northeast 20th Street, the owner has secured. We also have on page 27, Councilman Stonecifer had requested under item 9T1D, and that's under claim for denial. There's a claim here that Councilman Stonecifer would like to visit with Municipal Counselor's Office with further, and he's asked that we defer that item. And that is all that I have. I'm sorry, defer it for two weeks, yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to revocable permits. Item 6A is a joint revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and the National Multiple Sclerosis Society to hold the Walk MS Oklahoma City. And it looks like we do have Kristin Flores come here to speak on this topic.
Hello, good morning. I am the senior specialist of the Walk MS Oklahoma City event. This is our 32nd year, I believe, that we'll be doing this walk in the Oklahoma City area. It is a event, a one-mile and a three-mile walk to raise funds and awareness for multiple sclerosis, which affects about 200 people diagnosed every week. We're learning it's a disease that the immune system attacks the covering of the nerves and affects people in multiple ways. Our walk this year is taking place the Saturday, March 30th, at the Route 66 Park. The site will open at 8:30, and the walk start time will be 10:00 a.m. And we've been working with the Parks Department as well as the Police Department to make sure that we have enough staff and all the proper materials in order to make sure that this event is, not only brings awareness, but is safe and family-friendly for all those attending.
Great, thank you. Councilman Gray.
Yeah, it looks like a good event, and it's a great example of why the Overholser Trail needs to be finished on the west side of Overholser, because the run is going to be on the street, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And so if there was a trail over there, we could be off of the street, but there you go, just a little Ward 1 plug. I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event. Item 6B, this is a revocable permit with the Arts Council of Oklahoma City for the Festival of the Arts 2019, and Peter DeLeese is here to speak. Good morning.
Well, it's hard to believe it's been 53 years that we've been doing Festival of the Arts, and it actually opens...
Not you personally, but...
Not me, no. I don't think I'm 53 years old. Just kidding. And we're very excited to be presenting it once again. Exactly one month from today, it will open. Hard to believe. Perfect spring morning today. I hope it's just exactly like this on opening day. Brought you some posters for City Hall, and also they're passing out the invitation to the officials luncheon, which happens on opening day. We would love for you all to attend. Actually, have invited the whole council to be onstage with us. Mayor Holt will be one of our presenters that day. Thank you for that, sir. It's just an amazing event. We have 144 artists and 30 food vendors. It's really the only place in town that you can get a stir-fried rice bowl served inside of a pineapple. So there's quite a few really interesting taste treats to be enjoyed, as well as wonderful art. And we just couldn't do it without the incredible support of the City of Oklahoma City, and literally practically every department is involved in some capacity. And I echo what Meg was saying about just what an honor it is to work with so many great city employees, because they're really there for us. Before the event and during the event, through all sorts of difficult times and wonderful times, they've just been a beacon of support throughout the years. I can't, I really can't say enough about that, because it's just incredible, all the different departments and how much they help to make the event a success. That's all I have for you, sir.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Sawyer.
Move approval. I was teasing Peter that maybe this time I would say no. Not issue the permit.
I was trying to sneak it in to make sure that you were still on the...
Yeah, I do just want to encourage everybody to come down. The move two years ago to Bicentennial Park has been a tremendous success, and it is so much, there is so much energy here when we open the front doors of City Hall and have art and food and music right on our front doorstep. So please, everybody, come, enjoy the food, buy some art, and take advantage of all the hard work the Arts Council...
You know, the modern streetcar is really going to be interesting to see how that affects the event this year, because as it does its circuitous route, there are so many parking lots along that route that you can now just park just pretty much anywhere downtown and jump on the streetcar and just come right around. It has a drop-off point right there.
Right in front of the library, so it's incredibly easy to get there.
I'm looking forward to seeing how that affects the event.
Peter, thanks for all your hard work and your staff.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Got a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Peter. Have a great event.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got now item 6C, revocable right-of-way use permit with Downtown OKC Partnership to hold Starlight Supper. And Holly Hoiler is here to speak on this. Welcome, Holly.
Hi, good morning. I'm Holly Hoiler. Yes, now I can talk. With Downtown OKC, this is the seventh year that we're having the Starlight Supper. This is a five-course dinner with local chefs that benefits the Downtown Oklahoma City Initiatives, which works to fund public art and placemaking projects. These are things like the artistic benches outside, the surprise rain poems, and underpass murals, and much more. This is going to be on Thursday, April 11th at 7:00 p.m. We are closing the street at April, on April 10th at 7:00 p.m. to midnight on the 11th. Ricoco is catering. We have the restrooms inside Leadership Square, and we'll have an off-duty police officer to make sure that everything runs smoothly. This year, we are moving it from Bicentennial Park to Park Avenue in between Robinson and Harvey. And just to make sure that we know who is supposed to be there, this year we'll be expanding or stamping hands for art guests, and should be another great event to support public art.
This is a great example of ingenuity and creativity to move this event from the park to Park Avenue, which I think will be really interesting. And just a tidbit, this event, when it went live, to sell tickets sold out in five minutes.
Yes. Yes, we're very excited that this event is supported and loved by the community, and we love putting it on every year.
Yeah, hottest ticket in town. And I want to emphasize again, this is sponsored by Downtown Oklahoma City Initiatives, and it funds public art projects all around the city. It's been a big help. You missed your chance to get your tickets, I think. They're a long, there's a, we'll put you on the waiting list. Anyway, move approval, please.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 6D, revocable right-of-way use permit with Leslie Supper Club to hold 4,200 Northwestern Block Party on March 31st, and we have Gail Vines here to speak.
Good Lord, Megan. What you've accomplished, thank you so much, and thank you for finessing politics out of politics and bringing us all together. I'm here to represent St. Baldry's Oklahoma City. This is our 17th year. The council has been behind us each year blocking off the street. We've raised over a million and a half dollars for pediatric cancer research, and we've shaved 1,600 heads. And all of you guys are on the chopping block. But no, I wanted to come and personally invite you to come to St. Baldry's, March 31st, Sunday at VZD's. My son was diagnosed with cancer when he was eight. He died when he was 11, so this has been my mission. St. Baldry's, 90% of the money goes directly to pediatric cancer research. It's not an organization that raises $200,000 to donate $10,000. And just the legacy and playing it forward. I was at a grocery store a couple of years ago, one I never went to, and a young girl came up to me and said, "You're Fletcher's mother, aren't you?" And I said, "Yeah, I am." And she said, "Well, I don't know if you remember me, but I wasn't very nice to Fletcher in school." And I said, "Oh, I remember you, but I also remember you sent me a letter that was so genuine and authentic and heartfelt." She said, "I just want you to know that I had a son six months ago, and his name is Fletcher, so thank you all for continuing on."
Yeah, thank you for your service on the school board as well. We appreciate it.
Councilman Shadid. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we will now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through H, and we can take it all with one motion. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C that we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A and B. Got a motion and a second? David has left, and Frances is not here. How does she? Is this who this, ah, okay. We need to turn off David, sorry.
Sorry.
Left is powerless. Okay, we had a motion and a second on the items under the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council meeting, where we find ourselves on page five of your printed agenda. Items seven, the consent docket. I know that, Mr. City Manager, there's a presentation for item P.
Yes, we have two presentations. One is for item P, and one is for item AL.
Okay, and is there anything else that a council member would like to pull out?
Mayor, I was just going to mention 7O and 7Q.
O and Q, okay.
And I think I better for the last time...
This is giving me chills.
Move these items subject to individual consideration.
Yeah, sorry for the delay there. Hold on, hold on. Is there anything else that anyone wants to pull out? Okay, we'll take them in order. We've got item O, Councilwoman Sawyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that this is a resolution authorizing negotiation of after-school programming agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Oklahoma City, the Oklahoma After School Network, and the Urban League of Greater Oklahoma City, and it's part of the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative Out of School Time. And just want to thank these organizations for providing outstanding after-school programming for our youth at risk.
All right.
And if I can comment on that as well, we have a couple of strong neighborhood initiatives that are in Ward 7, so we are extremely excited about what's to come with these programs.
Now, item P, the resolution approving a continuum of care program grant agreement.
So Jared Shannon is going to give us a presentation on this item.
Jared Shadid with the Oklahoma City Planning Department, Community Development Division, homeless programs planner for City of Oklahoma City. I want to start off by thanking both Meg and Ed for serving at our Social Services Committee and having to make some difficult decisions about a difficult problem that doesn't really have easy solutions. So thank you for the time and the work you put in on that. Just going to be a brief overview on the continuum of care program. The term continuum of care is a term that HUD uses to... The term Continuum of Care is a term that HUD uses to basically describe your service area for homeless services, geographic service area, and all the services for homeless citizens within that service area regardless of their funding source. So they can be federally funded, privately funded, city, state, it doesn't matter. They're all continued to continue program if they collaborate with the rest of the continuum resources. Now, the Continuum Grant, however, provides permanent supportive housing for homeless citizens. And these contracts that are on the agenda today provide funding for nearly all the permanent supportive housing programs for homeless citizens in the city except for maybe two or three. Starting in January of 2018, all of these programs have started using our Coordinated Entry System, which we spent about six years developing with our service providers. Prior to this, every organization basically was more or less siloed. They coordinated but did not collaborate. They basically kept their own service list for clients. They had their own eligibility criteria and used their own assessment tools. Under the Coordinated Entry System, they're all now using more uniform eligibility criteria, and everyone is using the same assessment tool. And what this tool does is it gauges clients' severity of need based on their health criteria and other factors that are, might be keeping them on the street. And the more severe the case, the higher they are prioritized for services. And every week, these providers, not just the ones that we're providing funding for today, but many others that we don't fund, meet for a coordinated case management, and they basically address these clients by pooling their resources rather than just trying to do it all themselves as they used to. So basically, if an organization had a housing unit available but no case management, another organization could provide case management to get that client housed right then, which is much faster than the way things used to work, and it's a lot more efficient. All of these programs, except for sobriety-based programs, use a housing-first approach they have since 2013. If you're not familiar with what that means, it means they basically, they move clients directly from the street or shelter into housing without preconditions, and then they provide services once they're in housing to help keep them housed. We have about an 80% to 90% retention rate with these programs typically, which are real proud of. Not many people can boast that across the country. That attests to the good work that our service providers do provide. These are all renewal projects. We do get the chance to apply for new funding, which we did this year. Unfortunately, it does not look like we'll get the new funding this year, but in previous years, the past six years, we're the only continuum, or at least one of the only continuums in the state, to not have any of our funding or projects cut, and we've repeatedly gotten new projects, so we're proud of that, too. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Well, Jared, I just would really like to thank you for all the hard work you do. As Ed referenced, this is a very difficult subject matter, and you dedicate yourself every single day to making sure that people get service. And I do think it's important to note that the dollars here are almost $4 million of pass-through from HUD. And we regularly lament that we don't have enough funding at the city level to make a big impact, but we do pass through a tremendous amount of funding. So thank you for your, what your team does, and I'm hoping that the city's posture in helping solve this problem will elevate, and we can really take on a leadership role in helping to manage the crisis in our community. Mayor, I charge that to you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Jared. All right, 7Q, Meg, you wanted to talk about?
I did just wanted to recognize, as I did last week, the contributions of Randy Floyd and some of her group in saving the Walnut Bridge. And a plaque is being donated to the City of Oklahoma City that will be placed on the bridge to recognize those efforts.
Now, we have a presentation on Item AK and AL.
Yes, on AK and AL, Brent Bryant will give a presentation on this regarding the American Indie Cultural Center.
Yes, Brent Bryant with the City Manager's Office. Item AK is a lease agreement between the city and Economic Development Trust. It's a 50-year lease. When the city, when the state provided the city with the American Indie Cultural Center, they provided us a possessory right to the facility, and this is just memorializing that the city was leasing the property to the Economic Development Trust, who will subsequently sublease the property to the American Indie Cultural Center. This is similar to the projects that we've done in the past with the Mired Gardens Foundation and the Scissor Tail Park Foundation with our various parks in downtown Oklahoma City. The Management and Operations Agreement, this is a post-opening operations agreement. Back in July, you approved a pre-opening operations agreement, and this is the post-operating agreement. We had to do this for multiple reasons, and one was when the state provided us the facility, they asked that we do everything we could to ensure that the tax-exempt bonds that were issued to support the museum remain tax-exempt. And with private activity issues that you have with tax-exempt bonds, we needed to do some things to the operating agreement, and that's what we're doing here. The structure that you see here outlines where the Economic Development Trust will assume all, will assume the risk in which any profits or losses will be borne by the Economic Development Trust. That's a requirement for the tax-exempt bonds. What we've done, though, is we structured it where, in the event that they make excess revenues each year, we will set up a operating reserve and a capital reserve fund to help with the perpetuation of the foundation. In addition to this, this fulfills the requirements for a New Markets Tax Credit Structure. They're structuring, utilizing about $15 million of the donations, they're running those through a New Markets Tax Credit Structure that will result in an additional $2.1 million going towards the project. Much of the work at the American Indie Cultural Center has been rebid, and they're currently issuing work orders. And in talking to Eric Winger yesterday, we believe that you'll start to see more construction on the exterior in the whole of the people in May. So I think we're moving along, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I would like to thank Wiley Williams for all of his diligence on this. He's spent tireless hours working on this structure, along with working with the multiple entities that are working on this New Markets Tax Credit Structure. He has worked tirelessly on this, and I'd just like to recognize him and thank him.
All right, thank you. I think that concludes the things that we had pulled out. We have a motion in a second on the Consent Docket. I would also want to note that I believe you struck Item 7 AW-8, so that's not subject to the motion for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. That brings us to the Concurrent Docket, Item 8, A through M.
Who says that is subject to individual consideration?
We've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, anything anybody wants to pull out and talk about? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to Page 17 of your printed agenda, Item 9, Items Requiring Separate Votes. And we've got, start here with A, these are ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval. Item 9A1 is closing a portion of an alley in Block 32 of Maywood Edition. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you, Mayor. I see that the applicant is here. This is a, just a portion of an alley over in the Maywood Edition. As noted, it's northeast of 6th Street and just west of Oklahoman Avenue. This is, the purpose of this is to consolidate property for additional development. It was approved by the Planning Commission. There were no protests. I would move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. David's back, passes unanimously. And now 9A2, this is closing the south, 950 feet of Gilson Way, extending south from Southwest 29th, east of South Council. Councilman McAtee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? If you would share with the council briefly what the intention of this is?
And if you wouldn't mind by stating your name and address.
Gary Nolan with Smith Roberts-Baldishweiler, 100 Northeast 5th Street, Oklahoma City. And I'm representing the applicant Hobby Lobby. They own the property on all sides of the portion that's being requested to be closed. They have future plans to build more transportation buildings for their trucks along, there's going to be a building along 29th Street over here on the west side, and then a truck washing station towards the south. So they own the property surrounding this portion of Gilson Way. Thank you, sir. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
The Planning Commission recommended this be done. Unless the council has some questions, I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A3, closing an easement located at 10708 and 10709 Northwest 20th Street. Councilman Greiner.
This had no protests and unanimous Planning Commission approval, so I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9B, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. This is a special permit to permit automotive sales in the C-3 Community Commercial District at 3121 North May. We may recall this from a previous meeting. This was deferred for March 12th. Councilman Shadid.
And I believe, or is the applicant, so everybody's here, we have an agreement, which I'll just summarize as I understand it. Part of the permit is that the applicant will commit to building a fence, a six-feet-tall wooden fence. It'll be on either the location where a previous fence was, or the neighbor will do a survey to delineate the exact property line. But the applicant commits to building the fence at his sole expense. The neighbor commits to not contesting the location of that fence as long as it's either on the area of the previous fence or as delineated in a survey. Is that everybody's understanding?
Yes, Councilman, I guess I give them first option, yeah, to mark their location. And I just want to make sure that if we, if they don't, when we put the fence, they cease their objection to where we put it. We just give them option that go ahead and mark, you know, ask for a surveyor to mark their location. But if they don't want to do that, it's $200 cost if they don't want to go through that. I just don't want them hinder our work after we put it.
Right, so I think they're committed, they're, do you want to say anything?
Yes, we are. We, there is a previous, the line of a previous fence, the posts were cut off flush with the ground, they're very obvious. And our position is if the fence is rebuilt on that same line, we're satisfied with that and will provide a hold harmless letter to the applicant to satisfy that and therefore not have to do another survey.
Great, thanks to both parties to work in, working this out. I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9C, this is an ordinance on final hearing. This is the third of three meetings where we are considering this ordinance amendment. This relates to the definition of motorized scooter. We had a presentation at the first meeting, a hearing, a public hearing at the second meeting, and today is the potential final consideration. A consider discussion or a motion? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9D, this is an ordinance on final hearing, removing metered parking on the north side of West Main near Broadway. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is simply to change metered parking to a commercial loading zone in the same location requested by Bank First Tower. I would move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9E, this is a public hearing regarding ordinance relating to the Police Department. There was a presentation at the last meeting by Chief City. This amends Chapter 43, and it is an opportunity today for anyone to speak if they wish to on this potential ordinance change. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will move on, and that will be considered at the next meeting for potential final consideration. And that brings us to 9F. This is an ordinance being introduced today, set for public hearing April 9th, and a final hearing April 23rd, relating to motor vehicles and traffic and general schedule of fees, specifically regarding parklets. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, Jason Fairbrush is here. He's our Director of Public Transportation and Parking, and he'll introduce this ordinance.
Yes, so good morning, Mayor and Council. Pleased to speak about Item 9F this morning. Again, this is an introduction for a proposed ordinance change, looking at Chapters 32 and Chapter 60. And the reason for the proposed ordinance change is really to help us more formally address and manage parklets in downtown Oklahoma City. I'm sure most of you are familiar with parklets. We have a parklet in downtown Oklahoma City on Mickey Mantle that's been there for quite some time, so I'm sure you've had an opportunity to see that. But, you know, essentially, a parklet is an extension of the sidewalk where public space normally devoted to a location to park an automobile is actually transformed into, again, a public space, or in this case, a very small, usually park-type setting, where you'll have benches or chairs, tables. It's basically a place for people to gather in the urban environment, and they're becoming more and more popular across the country. I'm sure if you've traveled, you've seen them in other cities as well. So what we're, what we're proposing and what we're asking council to consider with these changes is, one, for Chapter 32, Section 1, we're adding a definition of a parklet to the municipal code. The next change is 32-376, and that has to do with the regulation of parklets. So basically, we're acknowledging that the Public Works Director has the authority to develop some parklet guidelines, and those parklet guidelines are attached in your, in your packet. And then we're also amending Chapter 60 of the municipal code, general schedule of fees, and requesting a $10 per day fee for using a parking spot for a parklet, and then in addition to that, a $35 administrative fee.
Was there a fee previously charged?
Yeah, so we've, we've typically approached parklets just as we would any other request to hood a metered spot. And so in the past, the fee's been $20 per day. What we've found is, of course, with normal hooding requests, it's usually a short-term, right, you know, while somebody's moving in and out, or maybe it's a construction project. But with the parklets typically being 90 days or more, in some cases renewed for additional multiple 90-day periods, we are recommending a $10 fee rather than the 20. We think it is more conducive to really the intent of, you know, promoting that public space.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, again, that will be, oh, we need to actually have a motion, I'm sorry. Motion to, or introduce, yes. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously, and the potential ordinance change has been introduced, set for public hearing next meeting and final hearing meeting after that. Items 9G1, 9G2, 9H1, and 9H2 are not quite ripe yet, and so we will be holding them. We'd like to consider them today, so we will be holding them potentially a little later in the meeting. 9I1, this is a public hearing regarding the refunding of certain outstanding portions of the city's GEO bonds. Maybe I'll, I'll return to that public hearing because I want people to have an opportunity to speak after the presentation. So fully understood what we're talking about. So I will explicitly offer that opportunity for public hearing again, but it might be useful if we have a presentation here about 9I2, the resolution providing for the sale and issuance of certain GEO bonds.
Yes, sir. So Kenton Sutil is here to talk about 9I, and he's also going to talk about 9J as well. We'll have the same issue with the public hearing, but he'll speak to both of those, and then we can come back and do the public hearings.
So 9I is actually a refunding or refinancing for our GOLP bonds. So back in 2007 and 2010 were the first two issuances of GOLP bonds that we did from the 2007 authorization. So I've been around long enough for actually refinancing these ones that I did way back then, some of my first bond deals. But we are refinancing about $18.5 million worth of bonds between those two issues. We estimate that the net present value of savings is going to be about $1.28 million, which represents about $137,000 a year of savings over the next 11 years. We're planning on pricing those bonds on April 16th, and we would close them on May 7th. So this is just purely being done for interest savings. Let me hit the next one. Okay, so also on J, this is refunding the 2009 GEO bonds. So similar thing, but the reason we're doing two different ones is Item I, the GOLP bonds are taxable, and they have to be done separately. So Item J is tax-exempt bonds. We're refunding about just a little bit under $25 million worth of bonds from the 2009 bond issue. We estimate we're going to have savings of just under $2.5 million on a net present value basis, which would represent approximately $275,000 a year of savings. value basis, which would represent approximately $275,000 a year of savings. Those, very similar timeline, we plan on pricing those on April the 16th and closing them on May 7th. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So, we now will have the public hearing for item nine I1. This is regarding the refunding of certain outstanding portions of the city's general obligation limited tax bonds, taxable Series 2008, issued in the original principal amount of $7 million, et cetera. Does anyone wish to speak on that topic? Members of the council? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion, I guess, for the resolution for nine I2, providing for the sale and issuance of bonds. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Now, nine J1, this is a public hearing regarding the refunding of certain outstanding portions of the city's general obligation bonds, Series 2009, issued in the original principal amount of $47,485,000 for interest cost savings. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion for item nine J1? Any members of the council? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion for nine J2, resolution providing for the sale and issuance of GEO refunding bonds. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. All right, this brings us to page 22 of your printed agenda, nine K, joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving the First National Center Redevelopment Project Economic Development Agreement, et cetera, and I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Brent Bryant is going to make a presentation on this, Gary Brooks will also participate, just to give an update on the building, on the First National Building. Both of these items relate to the First National, the first item and item K is the economic development agreement, and then item L will authorize incurrence of indebtedness. So Brent will go ahead and speak to both of those, and then we'll take those separately.
Thank you. Today, this economic development agreement outlines the requirements of both the city, the economic development trust, and the developer for the tower project on the First National Building. Just to remind you, this TIF was created back in February of 2016 for the benefit of the total development of this project. The budget was at $40 million of ad valorem and $5 million in sales tax. The project consists of three components, a garage, apartments, and a hotel. Back in 2017, the City Council and Economic Development Trust approved an agreement with the developer which allocated about $14 million of ad valorem and $3 million of sales tax for the development of the garage, and the garage is currently under construction. The apartments, due to the financing of the project on the private side, the developer asked us to combine both the hotel and the apartments together, so we refer to them now as the tower project. The agreement for you today is to provide an incentive up to $26 million, which is the balance of the budget, the overall budget of 14, and $2 million in sales tax. The agreement considers incentive payments and/or a TIF loan, which the developer has requested. The proposed loan features include we'll loan up to $25 million to the developer. Only $2.1 million of that would go automatically into a reserve fund to protect the city in the event of a shortfall. In addition to that, the annual payment that would be required on a 10-year, 20-year amortization would go, would be subject to a minimum tax or a minimum payment lieu of tax, which further secures the city. In addition to that, the apartment taxes, the ad valorem tax from the apartment will go into the reserve fund, again, further bolstering the reserve fund to protect the city. In addition to that, we've, in this agreement, we have, in the event that we go out and borrow funds, whatever our interest rate is, the developer will play, pay a spread on that, which equals about 75 basis points above whatever our borrowing costs are for the initial five years. Anything after that, it'll be 10, it'd be 100 basis points after that. That spread each year, when they make those payments, would go, again, to the reserve fund to protect the city. What we're seeking to do is, in the event that the reserve fund reaches 2.5 times, which is a little over $5.3 million, at that point in time, any excess funds that come in each year will go to pay that, rapidly pay down the debt. Again, in addition to that, in the event that if the project had issues or cash flow issues, the developers have agreed to come in with a personal guarantee to replenish the reserve fund anytime a draw is made on that. We structured this deal, again, to minimize the city's exposure, but also trying to get the project complete. Item nine L is a resolution authorizing the debt and the issuance of an RFP. It authorizes to issue up to $25.5 million, and the other, the additional half million dollars is a result of, if we actually issue bonds, we will need, we needed that in order to pay for issuance costs, so we added that. We are, the RFP does contemplate a private placement, though, so we're looking at both. We're trying to be, have flexibility in this, so that's what we're doing here. The timeline is the RFP would be launched tomorrow, with the proposals due May 1st, and then we're shooting for a closing back on June 12th. When we come back to the council, though, on June 4th, we would more likely also have a funding plan that's also part of this resolution as to how we would fund the $25 million request. We have contemplated a $15 million borrowing from an external source, and then maybe a $10 million from an internal source. And some of the sources we're looking at are the Workers' Comp Fund and also our Golt Fund. One thing that I would want to emphasize is, if we go out and do a borrowing and we do not get acceptable terms from a lending institution, we are not obligated to loan the funds. So, again, this authorization authorizes the city provide an agreement of support, and an agreement of support y'all often heard of as a moral obligation. The agreement of support is in the event of a shortfall, the city would step in and make the payments, which is like what we typically do on a lot of our bond issues.
And that would be, we've got the reserve fund, the debt service reserve fund that we would go to first, we've got the guarantee from the developers that we'd go to, and then if we aren't able to get those, then the city would back that.
Yes. Again, this is structured to minimize the city's exposure while supporting the project. And Gary Brooks is here, and he's going to go through some pictures, kind of to show you where we are on the project, and be happy to answer any questions after that.
Morning, name is Gary Brooks, 2217 Lone Oak Way. In January of 2016, my partner and I signed the contract to purchase the First National Center. Despite debate, we signed it willingly, without a gun to our head. A year later, we, after a substantial amount of due diligence, we closed on the property. Couple of the photographs here, just bring you up to date quickly. We've hauled, who's controlling it? You? We've hauled over 12 million pounds out of this building, and Councilwoman Salyer can tell you it's noisy at times, but we've only had to shut the street down a couple times.
That was an enormous crane. Did anybody else see the crane on Park Avenue? I'm not sure I've seen one that big in Oklahoma City.
It's the largest non-tower crane in the city, and they're quite proud of it. We won't have to do it very often, but to get some heavy equipment off the roof and to put equipment on the roof, they're getting ready to start some pretty serious construction. Most of what we've done over the last two years is demolition, just getting the building ready for construction. We're about 350,000 man-hours in the building so far. We anticipate about 2 million man-hours before we're complete with the job. So this is the east portion of the 1972 tower, it is the one area that the National Park Service has allowed us to remove. We wanted to take care of our own parking, we need 600 parking spaces for our project, and as most of you know, parking downtown's a challenge. In order to get parking to the office building floors, we have to build a double helix ramp, and the building would not accommodate that. So unfortunately, we're having to remove this piece, and we're down to about the 12th floor right now. You can keep going. This is just an interior of one of the tower floors. Most of the floors now are completely gutted. There's very little left in the building for us to remove. The question I sometimes get asked, have you found any surprises? There's nothing left in there to surprise us. We have touched every single square inch of that building, and most of it is now gone. Unfortunately, with an 88-year-old building, you're not able to go in there and reuse wiring and cabling and plumbing fixtures, and it just wasn't something that we were able to redo. Coney told us that we're one of the largest elevator/escalator contracts in the country right now. We were the largest asbestos removal contract in the country in 2017, so not monikers that I'm very proud of. We have built a couple of hotel model rooms, we're working on a couple of model apartments. Basically, what that do, it gets us through the Marriott process, makes sure we all understand exactly what we're building, helps us define costs and make sure that we don't overspend, we don't put something in the building we don't need to. I have a lot of input from a lot of experts making sure that happens. I also like to say you don't want to underspend, you know, there's a balance there. You want to make sure that you find that balance properly for this particular project. You can run through the rest of them. We did about 113, I call them case studies, just felt like that with the uniqueness of the property, that we had to go find other people who had done this well, hopefully to build a playbook of how do you redevelop a building like this? Unfortunately, we didn't find that playbook, because every single one of the 40 or 41 that we visited, they're all different, they're all challenging, they all created their own challenges, and so you come back with great ideas, but one of the things you realize is there is no playbook. One of the case studies we studied was in Columbus, and it's called Leveque Tower. Some of you were on that Chamber of Commerce trip where we went and toured that. It's a Marriott autograph, it's got apartments, so through the Marriott team, they allowed me to hook up, and I went over about an hour early, did a full tour behind the scenes, knowing that I wanted to see more and ask the owner a few questions. Leveque Tower is, I call it Columbus's First National, it's gorgeous from the outside, it's a beautiful building. You get inside, it doesn't have a great hall, and we've discovered very few buildings in the country do have a great hall, but it's a wonderful lobby. We get inside, and what you quickly find out is, the apartments in the hotel rooms, they were good, but I didn't feel like they reflected the quality of the building and the character of that building. And I made a promise to myself when I left there that nobody would ever walk in First National and go, what happened? You know, what, did you get scared? Were you afraid to just make it as good as you possibly could? We're three years into this project now, we're just now beginning to define what really, really good looks like. I'm not, I don't use the word great, I think that's a little bit of a stretch, it's going to be for the public to decide whether it's great. I can tell you Marriott thinks it's going to be great. Marriott believes that First National will be a national story, they've told me that. We have passed all of their tests with flying colors. It's an 88-year-old building, I think it's more spectacular than it was when it's built. Our goal is to make sure in 88 years, it's even greater than it is today. So we need your support, and I would appreciate a vote. And I'll ask any question, my guess is I've been asked every question possible, so.
Any questions for Gary or Brent?
Ask a question. Brent, I mean, so Brent, I mean, I don't recall exactly, but my general recollection is that when we did the TIF initially, that there, that part of the sales pitch was we weren't going to borrow any money, so now we're borrowing money.
Correct.
So I guess the question is, what safeguards are there going forward? I mean, does this become too big to fail? You know, we're only, I mean, we're still on the early part of it. I mean, what happens next if this, if the numbers don't line up and?
Well, one of the risks that you do have are construction risk, obviously. With the structure that he has on this project, there's a significant amount of equity that has to go into the project, it's over $35 million if I can recall, but before, and it's a, it's a $180 million project when you look at just the hotel and the apartments, and there's an $85 million loan on the hotel apartments from the private sector, and then our $25 million, our money goes on the back end with that, with those funds. So one of the safeguards is, is we're not putting money in it today, we will put into money in it after all the equity has been exhausted, all of the, when you do historic tax credits, what they do is they do a bridge loan with all the tax credit revenue, all that money has to go into. So we've tried to minimize our risk with construction risk by putting our money on the back end, and the way, way we've structured it is, we're alternating draws. The first thing we do is we take out $2 million, $2 million out of the 25, and we put it in a reserve fund to protect us. The next thing we do is we'll do the first draw, that won't be until September, and then Centennial Bank will do the next one in October, then we'll do November. So we're trying to spread that out, that's one thing we're doing. Other things we're doing, we're getting a personal guarantee by both Gary and Charlie Nicholas. It's not with an LLC, it's a personal guarantee, and.
You mean, and you mean that legally binding personal guarantee, not a like, a guarantee? Although they've given that us as well, but I just want to clarify what you mean by that.
Some of these will offer an LLC, and you know, LLCs normally don't have any assets, so we know not to do that. In addition to that, one of the things that gives me comfort is the apartments, the property taxes on the apartments will go into the reserve fund, and that's another, that's another safeguard. And again, the interest and payments, principal payments that are due will be subject to a minimum tax payment. I mean, we're going to, there's going to be a covenant on the property that says they have to pay, if the amount's $2.1 million, they have to pay that. And that goes ahead of the mortgage in the event of foreclosure. We've done everything that we can reasonably do to protect the city's interest in this project.
I mean, taxpayers are putting tens of millions of dollars historic and state tax credits and all these, and we certainly get the communal benefit of saving this historic structure. Do we get anything in terms of affordable housing? Is there any affordable housing component to this?
There's not any affordable housing component in this project. And I think the reason it's not, this is a very hard project to do, just the numbers of what it takes to rehabilitate a historic building, you know? Rehabilitating historic buildings is expensive, and when you, when you go down that path, you're going to lower your rents, which is going to lower your NOI, which is going to lower your borrowing costs, borrowing ability. And so those are the kind of things, and I don't, we did not, have not looked at that, but.
You know, and I just don't think we can minimize the community benefit of restoring this building. It is probably the most important building in the city of Oklahoma City, and as I've thought through this a lot, I just can't, I can't visualize another project where every single player, public or private, would go as far as they can go, and maybe even a little further to make sure this project works and is successful. I just view it as the most critical thing we have still to do in downtown Oklahoma City. It wouldn't happen without our support.
Yeah, just to echo on those comments, I think the complexity of this project makes the scurven look simple, and I think you've done a very good job so far from what I can see.
Any other comments? We are, we actually have a couple items of business here. We have nine K, which is a joint resolution with the Economic Development Trust. Okay, got a motion and a second on that. I would just add, I mean, I just commend Gary and your partner and everybody, obviously, on the city side, Brent, and your team for the, for working through these very complex issues and your personal commitment to this. I mean, we're all very familiar, any of us who've spent any time with you over the last two years know your personal passion for this, and your willing, but at the same time, your willingness to be practical and do it, and do it, and do it right. So, thank you, and we know that we're making a big commitment here, too, but as everyone said, this is, this is worth it, so. With that, no further discussion, we cast a vote on nine K, passes unanimously, and that brings us to nine L on the same topic. This is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, et cetera. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. All right, thank you. This brings us to item nine M. This is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust issuing its sales tax revenue note Series 2019, et cetera. I believe we have a presentation on this.
Yes, so Kenny is back again, he's going to be back for another item when we finish the bond sale. This is our debt day, I guess, it's a most uncomfortable day for me, but. This is our debt day, I guess, it's a most uncomfortable day for me, but Kenny's going to describe what we're doing here with the zoo to help them with their capital plan.
So, item M disapproves a sales tax revenue note, the amount of $10 million and $30,000 for the zoo. We've been working with the zoo staff on kind of cash flow projections and just in looking at their major capital plans that they had going. They had a need over these next couple of years to ensure that they didn't run short on that and have to delay any capital projects. So, we had, the zoo trust had previously issued an RFP for bank loans because we wanted to look at something fairly short-term. We were, I'm happy to, to report that they did receive four different proposals, and each one of those proposed different things everywhere from 10 to 12 to 15-year bank loans. So, in working with our financial advisor and their staff and looking at the different proposals, Raymond James was the one that was selected, that was the winning bid. It was 3.02% rate for 15 years. It's about $850,000 a year of debt service overall, and has a 10-year call on it that gives them some flexibility in the event they wanted to pay that off earlier. So, the plan on this is that with your approval and the zoo trust's approval tomorrow, we would close on this, actually on the 28th, so here in a couple of days. So, this is something we've been working on with the zoo trust. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kenny, and also I see Dwight, our zoo director, is back there as well. Okay, well, we've got a resolution here, I could accept a motion on? Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Okay, we've got 9N1. This is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures, except for the one that was struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion regarding any of these structures? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the resolution found at 9N2 declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 901, this is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures listed here, except for the ones that were struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion of item 901?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Okay, we do have someone who signed up to speak on an item that was actually struck. Does David Starks, do you still wish to speak? We're, we're not considering that item today, but...
Can I see some?
Sure, absolutely.
Let me question all. Congratulate Nikki Nice, she doesn't know me, I have not met her. She was invited to come to our February meeting, and whatever occurred, she had another meeting she was attending, so we deeply apologize for not meeting her in advance. I am a retired Rose State College administrator. I live in the community. I'm an elder minister at the Northwest Church of Christ, and I want to be intelligent when I appear before this August assembly here. I would like to ask if it's possible to table number G...
Yes.
For the, for your next meeting, because I don't want to stand up here and be rambling.
Well, you said this...
I want to be very specific about this, because it's not just the building we're talking about here.
Yeah.
There's some other issues that I personally have gone to...
Yeah, well, you're...
Just about everybody I know in central Oklahoma to try to resolve an issue. This is a water issue, it's a rat-infested buildings behind us, cockroaches, everything else there. And the owner of the structure came to our January meeting and rattled off how he was going to take care of all of this. He had fines, whatever labeled against him by the city of Oklahoma City, we refused to pay the fines. So, it ended up, he's done nothing to improve this structure. So, I'd like to get with Nikki Nice and the elect, and by the way, I'm, I'm really embarrassed because I'm not the president of the Capital View Neighborhood Association. I served in that position about five or six years ago. All of the elected officials are absent today. They, they're the ones who should be up here talking about this. This, this factors into why we'd like, like for you to table this issue, bring it up at your next council meeting, that will give us time to put all of our factual facts together, bring some PowerPoint stuff here so it can be seen what is really happening. Let me just give you a tidbit in my terminology of the structures we're talking about. 3610 Spring Lake Drive, Building A, Building B, there are five apartment buildings inside of Building A and Building B. At the present time, I hate to tell you this, but they are unoccupied, rundown, boarded up, and about to crumble and fall over anyway. So, I don't want to go any further than that. If I can get this table until our next meeting, then I think we will have something we can discuss and be intelligent about it. And I'd like to, and we'd like to meet with you, Ms. Council, what's seven representative, Nikki Nice, and go over things we need to talk about in our next meeting.
And I appreciate you for speaking, and I did not make the February meeting, but I believe it was two weeks ago I did meet with some of the neighbors.
Right, I know you'll be at the next one.
That were there, and I will make sure we have some, some presence at the next one, and I would like to see what we can do to, to discuss what's going on.
And I can leave my name and number, phone number, so you can have that.
Yes, sir.
My wife don't mind you calling.
I appreciate that. She doesn't mind, is that her back there?
Say again?
I said, "She doesn't mind, is that her back there?"
Yeah, that's her back there. Oh, by the way, this is 52 and a half years.
Yes, sir, well, congratulations for 52 and a half years.
This will be behind me, 52 and a half in September will be number, what, 53?
53, alright.
I know you guys are jealous.
Yes, sir, well, we'll get together so we can talk more. Thank you.
So, this was struck, both under item O and P. What does that mean?
Our plan is to visit the property today and re-notify it. We've found some additional openings on some of the buildings there that we'll need to notify for.
Okay.
It'll do exactly what he's asking, it'll give us time for the next meeting.
Okay, so, so sir, it'll be on, it will be on the next meeting, it sounds like?
No.
No?
It's usually 30-day notification.
As soon as we leave these, these meetings, we will pursue what we need to do to get it on the...
How quickly will it come back to the council?
We're going to attempt to have it at the next meeting. If we can get notification within the statutory timing and do, we'll do everything we can to have it at the next meeting.
And we'll communicate with Councilman Nice on that too, and make sure we're together when we bring that back.
Perfect, and I'll make sure I talk to the president of the Capital View and find out what's going on as well.
Okay, so is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any items at 901? Seeing none, I'd entertain a resolution, a motion for 902, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to 9P1. This is a public hearing on the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the ones that were struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion of 9P1? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the resolution found at 9P2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Okay, this brings us to 9Q1. This is a resolution adopting a December 2018 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Project Implementation Plan. And then we also have under item 9Q, item 2, resolution approving an allocation of Better Street Safer City sales tax funds, and I believe maybe we have a presentation.
Eric Winger, our Public Works Director is here to speak to this, and this is following the similar, similar practice that we followed as we've updated the plan and increased allocations that we have come back and amended the plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, what is before you today is the Second Amendment to the Implementation Plan for Better Street Safer City as a part of the sales tax program. You might recall that the original plan was adopted in May of 2018. We have the First Amendment in September of 2018, so this December update will be that second to the plan, all done within that first year of the program. What's included in this update today is added arterial and residential street resurfacing projects. It also enhances the methodology for how projects are selected. One of the things that we found in that first year on the residential, we originally looked at those by square mile, but finding that not every square mile of residential streets was in need of repair, and so we've actually been able to make that a finer grading, and we're able to either look at it neighborhood by neighborhood or quarter mile by quarter mile, so it's allowing us to expand those dollars further to the streets that are needed the most. And so that methodology update is also included in the plan. The previous plans have included other updates like adding trails and sidewalks. This plan strictly is just adding additional street resurfacing. The second item that's on the agenda is for the authorization to support the additional projects in the amount of $15,200,000. With your approval today, and this is being recommended by the Citizens Advisory Board, this will have about 50% of the residential and arterial street resurfacing projects authorized based on the amount of funding to date. So, there's about 50% that will be remaining. We're already working on additional amendments for 2019, so you can anticipate receiving additional amendments. I think with that, I can answer any questions that you might have about the item today.
Well, I never miss an opportunity to mention, this is the largest street repair project in city history, $800 million, and, and it has quite a process, and you alluded to it, the fact that we have a citizen advisory board for this, just like we have for MAPS. And I, I would also refer anyone who wants to get a little deeper dive to go to OKC.gov/betters safer. There, there's a searchable map and also just a simple list of, of all the projects that are all over the city, not just downtown. In fact, hardly any of them are downtown, they're, they're spread across our borders. With that, we do have a resolution that would adopt the December 2018 update, and if there's no discussion or questions, I could take a motion?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. We also have 9Q2, resolution approving the allocation, in this case of about $15 million. Okay? Is there a second? Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9R1, this is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Campbell v. City of OKC. Staff does not believe we need a executive session, but it looks like someone has signed up to speak, so maybe we'll begin there.
2900 Northeast 18th Street. I believe this is a issue regarding, Daniel Hosts Claus, am I correct? I didn't hear anyone, am I correct, everyone? Thank you. Here it is. We have a monster now serving 263 years where he belongs, actually up under the Oklahoma State Penitentiary. Now, according to my investigation of this entire situation here, again, I must say that I was one of the most influential ones to make sure that guy got what he belonged, what he deserves. But now, even though it's not admitted in your pamphlets here or applications, I don't see anything regarding how much money that this facility, this horseshoe community here is going to recommend with respect to no, again, not accepting liability, however, this is, I believe, in a resolution, I expected to give the victim a compensation, which I believe is $25,000? Are y'all kidding me according to my investigations of it? There's no kind of way, when you have, I believe, a cap of $175,000 for a monster here who was not only a rapist, who was not only victimized innocent black women, but he clearly was a racist because he didn't rape, again, I'm glad he didn't, any other nationality of woman. I believe that $25,000 is a slap in the face and a joke to what this, this lady here deserves. As a matter of fact, it should be an exemplary of what can be expected of any other officer or anyone else who violates the privacy and rights of a woman's personal being without their permission, especially when you have a police officer, a former police officer, who for the most part, who terrorizes the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Again, $25,000, y'all, y'all kidding me? That doesn't even scratch the surface of the emotional trauma that this lady has gone through. I don't know whether she's had to, to have any kind of therapy sessions or whatever, but I tell you something, I mean, this is really, she should be given the max what's allowed under the statutes of Oklahoma. And also closing here, I would like to be myself to be the first one to say, I am at least glad that even though not admitting, which is, again, this is standard procedure when it comes to legal avenues, that you, this council will be taking up in consideration of this lady's trauma that she's gone through, and I hope that y'all will be able to look at other areas where such a, I think there are other, well, 13 women that were raped, I don't know what steps they're taking, because I'm not into that personal business, but anytime they come before the city council, you can best believe Michael Washington's going to give his two cents worth. So, again, thank y'all very much, and again, y'all should give this woman, not because she's black, but because she's a human being, and you had a man who had a job to be a civil servant, who decided he was going to be a monster instead. So, again, anybody who comes from somewhere like that should be held accountable. Again, I believe $175,000 should be given to this lady, Ms. Campbell, and any other lady that may come before you who's been raped viciously by state or city employees. Thank y'all very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. So, we are still on item 9R1. Is there any need for a discussion, or I take a motion? Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9S1, this is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing Collins, Zorn, and Wagner to represent municipal employee Robert Varney in the case Dawson v. City of OKC. Staff does not think we need an executive session, so I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to 9T1. This is claims recommended for denial, except for item 9T1D, which was deferred at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on these items? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to, as we leave item nine, I want to note we may still return to a couple of items back there if, if the bond sale comes to its conclusion. Having said that, we'll move now to 10A1, claims recommended for approval. We've got A through G. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to items from council. Perhaps we will begin with the eagerly and long-awaited Ed Shadid resolution. We're going to just, we're just, it was Councilman Shadid's preference that we just keep it casual and that it, it remains up here on the horseshoe, but nevertheless, we are going to read it, and so I would ask, I would ask the clerk to read.
Whereas Dr. Edward Shadid was elected as Ward Two council member on April 5th, 2011, and was re-elected March 3rd, 2015 by a 59% vote. And whereas during his years of service to the city of Oklahoma City, Councilman Shadid served on the Emergency Medical Services Authority, the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, the Municipal Facilities Authority, the Public Property Authority, MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board, PLAN OKC Citizen Advisory Team, and the City Council Judiciary Committee, Social Services Committee, Finance and Capital Improvement Committee, and the Neighborhood Conservation Committee. Whereas during his tenure as Ward Two council member, Councilman Shadid held town hall meetings on topics related to public safety, the convention center, PLAN OKC, tax increment financing, the Oklahoma City Boulevard, and the past, present, and future of water in Oklahoma City. Whereas Ed Shadid held health fairs and supported Open Streets OKC, Basile Arts Festival, Walkability and Sustainability, he supported historic preservation, was an outspoken advocate for equality striving to bring people of varied backgrounds together to share ideas. He annually attended the Interface Services and was a proponent of the Human Rights Commission. Whereas Councilman Shadid initiated legislation in 2011 to ban smoking in all city-owned and operated buildings, indoor and outdoor, provided for tobacco-free parks, and prohibited the sale or use of vapor products by minors. sale or use of vapor products by minors. Also in 2011, he submitted an amendment to the city's personnel policies to include specific reference to discrimination based upon sexual orientation. In 2014, he provided for the disclosure of certain gifts received by the mayor and council. He's an advocate for the public hearing process, legislating additional public hearings for economic development and the sale of city property. He also advocated for Sunday holiday and evening bus service, ADA-compliant bus shelters and sidewalks, regional transit, Indigenous Peoples' Day, health food and beverage options in vending machines in city buildings, and he led the Western Avenue Streetscape Project, and he supported the raising of chickens in neighborhoods. Whereas Councilman Shadid was the lead in implementing the OKC Care Clinic Employee Medical Center by attending an employee primary care medical clinic in San Antonio, Texas, and providing his expertise in medical services to the Personnel Department. Whereas he advocated for transparency in government by ensuring compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the release of records to the public in compliance with the Open Records Act. Whereas Councilman Shadid is an advocate for public participation in the democratic process, even involving his children, Maya, Daya, and Zane, in his campaigns and in his supported grassroots movements such as initiative petitions. And he always encouraged open discussion of issues brought before the city council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby thank and commend Dr. Edward Shadid for his eight years of dedicated service to the residents of Ward Two and the citizens of the city of Oklahoma City, and wish him all the best.
James, you want to say?
Go around. Ed, I've enjoyed getting to know you over the last six years. Enjoyed sitting next to you. You know, the one thing that Ward Eight and Ward One have in common is that you only have one person to talk to during the, off-mic during these meetings. And so I've enjoyed having Ed next to me. And things I appreciate about you are your passion, your intelligence, your amount of research that you put into things. And that'll be missed on this council. You know, politically, you and I are extremely different, but we've found ourselves agreeing on certain city issues. And I've enjoyed seeing that, just experiencing that interaction between you and me. And just like I said to Meg, I think you've represented your constituents really well. So I wish you the best.
It's been a pleasure to serve next to you, Ed. And also, I'd like to commend you and the residents of Ward Two for being able to coexist with the residents of Ward Three on our common boundaries. For the eight years, we have not had a single border squabble, and I hope that we can continue that. It's been a pleasure to hear your thoughts and to feel your passion for your issues. And you've done a great job for your, I mean, for your citizens in Ward Two, and God bless as you go forward.
Ed, I've got to say, I really, really have appreciated you bringing up differing views that may not necessarily align with an original opinion I have. But I do bring a lot of value when I have an opinion. For someone else to bring in other insight, because it makes me feel like I'm making a better overall decision. So for that, I really appreciate you. I also appreciate your contrariness a little bit. And it makes me sometimes feel like I'm not voting no enough up here. And maybe it's, I'm giving too easy a pass on some of these items. So I do always think of that, and I think of you going, man, I've got to vote no more. So thank you, Ed, and I appreciate your service to the city.
Ed, it really has been a pleasure to work with you. Actually, I've enjoyed working with you. And thanks for all the projects you've given me the last eight years. It actually gave me something to do, kept me a lot busier than I would have been otherwise. So, and you still have 13 days to go, so it's not too late for another one.
I just want to say thank you for your service to our citizens and the dedication that you have, and your passion, what you believe, and where you stand. You push us hard, and you ask us tough questions. And sometimes it really does make us step back and rethink things. And I think, like Councilman Stone said, we end up with a better product in the end, and I just appreciate your commitment, Ed.
Ed, I'm sorry, Mayor. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, we came on the council at the same time, and you've been very helpful to me in my, I'm going to use the word growth, in terms of being on the city council. I appreciate all that you've done. And there is no doubt that every time you bring forth something, it's in your opinion, you have the citizens' well-being foremost in your efforts to see things come through. And that's very admirable. And I'd say, we probably have more in agreement. Sometimes we just differ on how to get there. But it's obvious, you're very sincere and caring about the citizens of Oklahoma City, and you've just added a lot to the city's governance over the last eight years. We will miss you as well, and we hope that you'll still, you know, stay in touch with us, you know, the best you can. I will say this. Some of us know the struggles we face by maintaining a full-time job plus serving on the council. Unless you're doing that, it's hard to comprehend. You just basically have to give up everything else other than your job and serving on the council. So I admire you. I appreciate all your hard work. And again, I do hope you still stay in touch with us throughout the years. Thank you.
Ed, a couple of things. We have had some squabbles, unlike Larry. We've had the privilege of sharing borders, and I really do appreciate all the work that we've been able to do together. On 23rd Street, we're really, you know, seeing some gains. But the thing I'd like to say most importantly is really what David said, your passion that you bring to this. And even if we have ideas where we don't agree, I think we've ended up with a better product as a result of the conversations. And I always think about the Boulevard when I reflect on the struggles. That project wouldn't be nearly as good as it is. And I know you agree. I think I agree with you. It's not perfect. But we got so much better product by having the conversation and by working together, hiring consultants, you know, creating something that's much better for our citizens. So I really appreciate the openness and the dialogue. And you have really helped me think hard about issues that maybe, you know, I took to heart one way. And there's always a difference of opinion. We talked a little bit earlier about listening. And I think that's the most important part of this job. And it's so, you know, we all learn that very smart people who care passionately about something can have a difference of opinion and should be able to work through that civilly. And you've done that with us, and I really appreciate it. And thank you for including your kiddos in the process. It's just a great education for them to see you go through this.
Councilman Shadid, thank you for your service. And I believe initially, I met you when I was working at the radio station, and we interviewed you as you were running for a different position at the time. And one of the things that I can say then that I say now, as your kids have described Chief City, you were woke. I felt that you were very woke and knew the issues. And that's one of the things that I was eager to learn more about as I was sworn in. And we sat down, and you told me some of your desires and things you wanted to make sure that happened before you left. So hopefully, we'll be able to carry some of those torches to make sure they come into fruition. And again, it has been an honor to serve with you on city council. Thank you for your service.
Ed, I want to tell you how much I admired. Every time you walked in this room, you were so prepared. And, you know, the first time you get one of these agendas with all the documents, it's a little intimidating. And I remember walking up to Pat Ryan and asking him, what should I do with this? And he kind of adjusted his glasses and looked real oddly at me and said, I suggest you read it. And you've always read this. And you were always well-prepared. And it's, I think the best word is curiosity. I admired your curiosity, your ability to drill down into the details and question things. And from that, I learned. And so I would like to say thank you. I'd like to say thank you for what you taught me. Thank you for your service. I wish you well in your future endeavors. Come back and see us, and God bless.
Councilman, I guess nothing speaks more to your uniqueness than the fact that we couldn't even honor you in the normal way that we always do. But, but really, for all of that talk and all of that, you know, jokes up here like you're Dr. No, I mean, the reality is that I think you and I, over the course of the year that we've been together, have only voted on opposite sides of an issue probably less than five times. So we really were able to find a lot of common ground in the pursuit of building a better Oklahoma City. And I think you asked a lot of tough questions, but many of them, not all of them, but many of them were very good questions. And they needed to be asked. And you served that role, and you have spoken for a very important sector of our city that didn't always have a voice. And I think that's very important to remember. And I think that that voice has gotten louder partly because of you. And I think that's a good thing, and a positive thing for our city. So I think your service will be well-remembered here. And I certainly join everybody in wishing you the best in your next chapter. And before we let you speak, why don't we take care of a little bit of business? Because we do want to hear from you. But why don't we pass this resolution that we just heard Francis read? With that, I'd accept a motion.
What's the resolution?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And congratulations on this well-earned semi-retirement, at least from elected office. And you have the floor.
Grateful for all your comments, and I echo them. And I appreciate you listening. And today, I ran for a lot of reasons. I have three principal issues that are most important to me, and I'd like to speak to them one last time with a specific request of you just going forward. Before I do that, I want to just thank the people of Ward Two for giving me this opportunity, which, next to my kids, is the most meaningful experience of my life. One of the things that made it most meaningful was the city staff. And, you know, I'm an introvert. I don't necessarily like being in big crowds and even really being here. But it's always nice after it's over. But the one-on-one meetings with city staff are what just gave me so much energy. And the intellectual stimulation and so many people, I don't want to, so many people had an impact on me. And I just, I would expect to continue to speak with them in my dreams. I think that things are getting better. They're better than when I got here. But I do think city staff deserved better, especially early on in my tenure. When I started, right before James was elected, I was 44 years old. I was the youngest member of the council. I think the average age had to be well into its 60s. We didn't talk about things like diversity. If you said a phrase like "place-making" or "complete streets", I'm not sure how much of the council would know what those terms meant. We'd been named by Prevention Magazine as the worst city for pedestrians in the entire country. And we crawled our way, and we made progress on all those fronts. I think that with Craig's leadership, I'm hopeful that we have an environment in which all the city employees are, feel free and safe in a environment of trust to express their opinions, that there won't be any retribution. Because I think the people benefit from that. And based on the things that I've heard you say, I'm hopeful that's going to happen. I think that the city staff deserved a mayor and council that was fully autonomous and free from corruption. And I'm sad to say that I don't think they got that, until now. City staff deserved to be adequately funded. And I think they were artificially starved over the years of my tenure. And I think this is something that I hope that the council will discuss in the next year on the MAPS IV campaign. Because to be truly honest in that campaign, you have to share with the people what I really don't hear anybody discussing, which is that we have artificially kept our sales tax rate low in order to allow for the MAPS program. We are a full penny, more than a full penny, below the other cities in Oklahoma, Tulsa, Lawton, Edmund, Norman. And by keeping the sales tax low, which is basically our sole source of revenue for operations, we basically asked department heads to create layoffs that weren't necessary, self-defeating travel bans, incredible decisions, like not having Sunday or evening bus service on a public transit system. I mean, that we had a city manager, assistant city managers, mayor, council, that we, in medicine, we would call that operating outside the standard of care. And it is so far outside of the standard of care and deserves the strongest rebuke. And I have so much shame. But men and women in the Transit Department came to work every day, and they tried to make our transit system the best they could, until time passed and things got better. And I'm grateful for their service. The Planning Department deserves to be elevated to its rightful stature, and we're getting there. But it didn't deserve to be marginalized the way it was, especially early in my tenure. I can't imagine being in the Historic Preservation Office and watching us in the last decade tear down more structures than any decade outside of maybe the IMPA decades, the urban renewal eras in the 60s. A council that would abide by a comprehensive plan when it felt like it and not abide by it when it didn't feel like it. And people put their blood, sweat, and tears into drafting that. And I hope future councils will continue to adhere to it. It's a noble profession. I hope my kids are exposed to it. I do have three topics today. And I don't feel like I've made much progress on these three. I do need to, even though, as many have said before me, you need to speak truth to power, no matter who's listening, and if your voice is weak or shaky. I think the voices that come after me, I'm only really the harbinger of things to come. And even though I may have seemed like Dr. No or the radical, I think the voices that come after me, starting a couple of weeks, but then the ones after them, the voices will be stronger and stronger on these issues, because they'll have no choice, because these three issues will all get worse over time. And they may sound more and more radical to the current council or councils I've served on. But over time, they will become the norm. And the councils that I've served on, actually, I think, become the radicals. The first request, first topic, is to have an open and honest discussion about mental illness, including addiction, which includes releasing the survey of mental illness and trauma in the Oklahoma City public schools and work towards helping city employees with mental illness and trauma. About a year, year and a half ago, the State Department, Terry White, came. We met privately. They did a survey of all the children in Oklahoma City public schools. And it was shocking, and it's frightening. And a year later, I'm not sure why it hasn't been released, especially when we're thinking about putting things like mental illness in MAPS IV. That study, that survey, has to be released immediately, as soon as possible. And we have to have a public discussion about it. It's not unique, what's happening. It's scary. I mean, the numbers are shocking, but it's happening nationwide. There is a substantial spike in mental illness among children. There is, since 2012, you look at insurance claims, like a 65% increase in major depression among teenagers. One in six children has mental illness. Aurora Laura, the previous superintendent, called mental health and trauma among the children the biggest problem in the schools. And if we want to make the schools better, if we want to make education better, you can't have that conversation until you have a conversation about mental health and trauma. Child abuse, sex abuse, homelessness, poverty, it goes on and on. But it's trauma that's the key. And all our public health deficits, all this, trauma and mental illness is the conversation you have to have first. And you can't study it to death. You need to get that survey out and talk about it. So there's one in six kids with, and I would just say that the spike happened around 2012. And as a parent of three teenagers, I think that cell phones utilization rate is part of that. The kids are sleep deprived, and sleep deprivation is part of it. So one in six have mental illness. As a teenager, I was one of those children. As a teenager, I was one of those children with mental illness. I struggled with addiction. I functioned at a high level. I made it through the years. I then went to a Level 1 Trauma Center in Harlem where I, I did surgical training, spine surgery training for six years. We worked 125 hours a week, sometimes even 150. Men with sociopathic tendencies would tell me things like, "You're not a true spine surgeon until you've paralyzed someone." Soon after I graduated, a resident killed himself. Another resident in another program killed the daughter of a state senator because he was sleep deprived. And the New York State Legislature put their foot down hard, and restrictions spread through the country. So, today, nowhere in the country are you able to do what was done to us. But you couldn't put the genie back in the bottle. The, the problem was I'd had enough cumulative trauma that, that never in a million years would I be able to pull out of that on my own. I had to eventually go to, to rehab and treatment for three months, which was one of the best experiences of my life. And, but without that, I wouldn't have been able to, to do so. So, I, there was a progressive descent into a dark place as a result of the cumulative trauma. And if I spoke a little bit longer, like I'm doing now, a little bit louder and with more urgency, I think I was trying to make amends for those events of 15 to 25 years ago. So, the issue here at the city is that we have, I think as Meg pointed out, 4,800 employees, right? So, you look at statistically, you know, in all, any business, you've got 10%, 15% that are struggling with mental illness and have a substance use disorder, right? The problem is here, we've got like 40% of our employees are first responders. So, if you look at the numbers for first responders, it is completely different than the general population. The police and fire have five times the depression rate as the general population and with, and PTSD, PTSD rates. Police or, and fire are significantly more likely to die from suicide than to die in the line of duty. What happens, and I, I sent all of you a study last night on, on first responders. And what happens is, there's, there's a list of about 34 critical incidents that you can observe, and each time you observe one of those critical incidents, you increase the risk of having mental illness, PTSD, substance use disorder. And a police officer in the U.S. will observe one of those events an average of 188 times throughout their career. So, that might be seeing somebody die, viewing a decaying, decayed corpse, being injured, injuring somebody else, seeing a sexually assaulted child, seeing a neglected animal, et cetera. So, police and fire are seeing all these things. Shame and stigma prevent them from seeking help. And so, what I would say, my ask, is that management, find those people, right? You know they're there. There's hundreds of people working for the city that have mental illness. There are hundreds of people with substance use disorders. So, find them. If that means negotiating with the unions for more random drug screens, if that means once you've had enough of this cumulative trauma, and the article I sent you last night should be, I mean, I think makes a great case for having some form of mandatory mental health screen since shame and stigma are preventing people from seeking help, that, that there are mandatory mental health screens once you've had enough of this cumulative trauma. And to the employees, I would say, go to treatment. You know, what, one of the small hole in my argument on salary for mayor and council is the amazing health insurance we have. So, we have health insurance for all 4,800 of us, plus the retirees, plus our families, that pays for treatment. And so, I would say, go. Yeah, it's an amazing feeling to white-knuckle it and then let go. And then you go and, and do the hard work. It, it's, it needs to be for 90 days. The insurance will ask you, will approve 30 days, and then if there's a reason to go 90 days, they'll approve that. And the reason you give them is that 30 days doesn't work. And we want to do what doctors and airline pilots have to do, which is 90 days and then five years of randomized drug screens and maintenance afterwards. That's the minimum. That's the key. That's how physicians and airline pilots get such a higher success rate than everybody else. And that's what City of Oklahoma City employees deserve. So, you might have to go out of state and go to Talbot, where I went and Al, in Atlanta. It's an amazing place. But go. Send your kids. Send your spouse. Just, just go and, I, I grieve not being there. It's, it's, it's the fastest rate of acceleration in personal growth you could imagine. It, three months doesn't sound like a, a long time, but there's a distortion of time which occurs, and, and it's amazing. Second topic. When I was there, they wanted me just to focus on emotions and minimize intellectualism, with the exception that we got to talk about addiction and things like denial and how powerful denial is. You could have, you could have an elected official continue to get DUIs, and it's obvious to everyone, just stop drinking, but for some reason, that person can't see it. And that's the, that's the most striking part of addiction to me. But what I was thinking was, was, what's plagued me since I was a teenager, it plagued me then, it plagues me right now, is that while I was dealing with mental illness, I was functioning as part of a society, a collective, a community, a species, which also is in denial and also is exhibiting collective mental illness or insanity when it comes to what we're doing to the planet and climate change, that we are destroying our host and, and creating this existential crisis for our kids. We're all on a boat, heading off of a cliff, and we're not paddling backwards, and we, we throw stones at people who say, you know, "This is what we need to do to keep pre-industrial raisin, rises in temperature to 1 and 1/2 degrees by 2040," which doesn't look like it's going to happen because nobody's doing anything. And people say, "Do you know what, how much that would cost?" Or we use, now we have this kill switch, which is socialism. So, if you say the word socialism, that's a kill switch, and you don't get to have a conversation anymore. But we need to put our oar in the water and at least paddle backwards a little bit. I went to this Congress for New Urbanism meeting a number of years ago, and they had all the, I was like a kid in the candy store, all the people, I looked up to Dewanee, who started it, Richard Florida, and all these people, and we were talking about climate, it was about climate change. So, I went in the room, really excited, and it was like they punched me in the gut, and it has stuck with me forever, I feel it right now, talking to you. Because in that meeting of the brightest intellectuals in America, they basically said, "It's over." And they didn't want to talk about prevention of climate change. It was all about adaptation. It was all about, what do we do, once the elected officials become honest, once the elected officials share with the population that Miami Beach is gone, no matter what we do, how is there an orderly transition back inland? How do we deal with the, with the flooding and the, and the climate change inland? It was all about prevention. It, it's almost like hospice care, like the patient is going to die. How do we keep things as governments so that the pain is less, is least for the people as, as we die? I'd, I'd ask you to think, what, what were your thoughts, all of us that were here, when Eric Winger was saying that in a five-year period, 2010 to 2015, we had two 100-year floods and three 500-year floods, right? A 100-year flood is that you have a 1% chance of that happening in a year. One in 500 is you have a 0.2% chance of that happening. The odds of that happening five times in five years is like a trillion to one. It's, 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 it's impossible, right? So, what, even if I'm off by 10,000 times, if it's 100 million to one, what is more likely? That we just witnessed a 100 million, 100 billion, trillion-to-one event during my time on the council, or that there's a new reality where there's more precipitation in the air? And that we're, Nebraska right now is big swaths underwater, a billion dollars of damage. There's 20 states that are facing epic flooding this spring. Remember the, the movie Jaws where the character's like, "We're going to need a bigger boat? Oklahoma City's going to need a bigger drainage system. We're not ready, and we have to invest in adaptation." Kansas City has, has committed to powering 100% of their municipal buildings with, with renewables by next year. We haven't really done anything. We are the only city in America, basically, that's building a convention center that doesn't have solar panels on the top. And I tried to get that, and I'd get arguments that, "Well, Ed, the, the price of electricity in Oklahoma City is so cheap, the return on investment isn't there." That ignores the negative externalities. That ignores the pollution. We're getting ready to get cited by the EPA for non-compliance with our air, which, coming from the Trump administration, is really saying something. But there are reasons besides just the, the return on investment to put solar panels on a convention center like virtually every other city in America is doing. Number one, you tell the kids, "We care. We give a damn. We're going to do what we can do." I don't do that. The Water Relay Centers is where we use the bulk of our electricity. I don't think I even knew this, but we get 3% of the, the OG&E sales on electricity as part of our franchise agreement. 3%, it's like a 3% return automatically. I mean, why wouldn't we be trying to incentivize electric vehicles, electricity utilization? But my ask, I guess, if there's just one thing that we did where, whether you believe in climate change or not, makes economic sense, is buy electric buses, right? This is where we're getting left behind in both Asia, by Asia and Europe, that have purchased 350,000 electric buses. Oklahoma, the United States has, municipalities have 350, right? China is 99% electric buses now, not just because of the air quality, but because even though there's a larger initial capital outlay, maybe 600, 700,000 versus 450,000, you save $45,000 a year because there's less moving parts, there's, they last longer, and the fuel savings. So, you're saving like $45,000 per year per electric bus. So, if you do one thing, buy electric buses. But do something, do anything. Third topic. Income inequality. Income inequality is increasing with no, no break in sight, right? And my reading of history is that when income inequality gets too great, you have instability, right? If you favor capitalism, if you want capitalism, you know that a byproduct is people without capital, and you have to have a safety net. You have to make things, you have to minimize the pain for those without capital in a capitalistic system. When I was in treatment, we couldn't, we weren't allowed to say the Lord's Prayer at the, at the end of the meeting. Like, if you go to an AA meeting in Oklahoma City, virtually all of them say the Lord's Prayer at the end. But they didn't want to offend anyone. They wanted everyone to participate. Even if 90% of the people wanted Lord's Prayer, you didn't say it, right? We start off every meeting here with a prayer, and usually, we invoke Jesus's name, right? The occasional time we have someone Jewish or Muslim, they, they just kind of say a prayer. But, and nothing against Christine Bird, I've been in her church twice, it was amazing. Her church is amazing, and the prayer is fine. But not everybody feels comfortable. My predecessor, Mark Schwartz, would stand outside that door, kind of in protest, he was Jewish, and then he would sit down after that's over. You have one out of three people in the United States that are less than 35 that don't subscribe to any particular religion. And so, as elderly pass on and, and they're replaced by the younger, you're going to have more and more people that aren't necessarily comfortable with that. And so, I'd ask you just to consider that. But for me personally, if we're going to invoke Jesus's name, right, at the beginning of every meeting, and I'm not sure that's right, because I look at Mark 6:5 and 6:6, where Jesus said, "Don't go pray on the corner like a hypocrite. Go into your room, close the door, focus on your prayer," right? Don't, because we're all going to fail, so we're going to be hypocrites. Then later, in, in Matthew 25:40, "Whatever you did for what, for those with the least, you did for me." So, I'm looking at that, and Jesus is saying, "What you do for those in society that have the least, you do for me." And we're invoking Jesus's name at the beginning of every meeting. But in my tenure, I don't see that. I don't see that we took steps to protect those that had the least material possessions. It's not that we were indifferent. We made things worse for them. We hurt people. We came to the conclusion somehow that in a city that was the worst city in America for pedestrians, in which there was no infrastructure for alternatives like bicycling, where this, where we have the second-largest city sprawl-wise, where we're incredibly spread out, that we would have no bus service in the evenings, that we would have no public transit on Sundays, that we would have public service on Saturdays once an hour. We hurt people. We kept, we said, "If you're rich enough to afford $10,000 a year to operate and maintain a vehicle, you can participate in society. But if you can't afford that, you don't." This is before Uber and Lyft. You don't get to go to the grocery store, you don't get to get to this job. We recognize, right, that the poor don't take trips to Disneyland. They take every dollar that they get, and they reinvest it in the Oklahoma City economy, and then we collect that as sales tax. So, it's in our economic interest to connect people to jobs, connect them to food, and, but we didn't. We allowed the Social Security Administration to be moved off the busiest transit line to 122nd and Kelly, where there was no public transit, because the developer wanted to. We knew from all the empirical evidence that you would want, that if you invest like we're investing in downtown, you're going to get gentrification. It's going to be not affordable for sizable segments of the population. But only at the end of my tenure did we start talking about affordable housing, and only then did we talk about 80% of median income, which is somebody making a $20-an-hour job, having a $20-an-hour job. That's not even, teachers don't even make that much. There's nothing on our radar in terms of affordable housing and stopping the gentrification, which is 100% predictable, for anyone making less than $20 an hour. So, we're, we're feeling... I'll just, I'll end with this. What would you, what would you have me say? Have you thought about if there was a Judgment Day and you had to answer to a Jesus what you did for those with the least among you during my eight years here? What would I say? That we had a $200,000 social services budget that we haven't increased in 15 years, but I protest that we have millions of dollars of federal pass-through funds? I don't think so. I think I stay quiet and I beg for forgiveness. This last thing to my kids. It's okay to be selfish. Everybody is, everybody that you know does. Everybody thinks about themselves. It's kind of amusing and sad at the same time that in neighborhoods and municipal government, which is the branch of government that affects our day-to-day lives the most, it's really only when people's selfish interests are involved that they get involved. So, that's natural. But in my experience is that when I've spent the bulk of my time focusing on myself, my wants and needs, myself, I'm not happy and oftentimes miserable. The only escape that I have found, which has been cemented by my eight years here on the council, the only escape from the bondage of self is working for others. Thank you.
Couldn't have stood that long now. I know.
Right. Selfish, sweet. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilman Shadid, and again, thank you, Councilwoman Salyer, for your service. And let's go around the horseshoe for anyone else who wants to speak, just under items from council. Larry?
I just want to say, in honor of Women's History Month, just give some, some accolades to some women who have represented our city. And the first is Patience Ladding, who was the first woman elected to city council, and that happened in 1967, and becoming the first woman mayor of Oklahoma City, and, and that happened in 1971. And at that time, Oklahoma City was the largest city in U.S. history to be headed by a woman at that time. So, I think that's a lot of history that needs to be recognized for women in making strides in Oklahoma City, and also sitting next to the ninth woman elected to Oklahoma City City Council, and all of the women who are a part of our staff and who helped to make this city move. We appreciate your efforts, and we honor you this month. And with that, I do want to say, we had our Northeast Developers Conference that happened in the Innovation District at the Jean Rainbolt of... in the Innovation District at the Jean Rainbolt School of Business, and it was a phenomenal conference, and a lot of ideas were said, a lot of ideas heard about what we would like to see happen in the Northeast community. So be looking out for the next one as far as just those minds coming together again and talking about issues. And also, we will be doing our How to Do Business with the City of Oklahoma City, and that's happening on April the 2nd at the Zoo Education Center, 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. And I'll end with this. Mr. Washington, thank you for your comments, and your concerns have not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Again, Meg Ed, thank you for your service. That concludes items from council. We're still waiting on some bond-issue things for those other items from under item nine, which we will return to if at all possible. And then that brings us to item 12, City Manager Reports, and I'll turn it over to you, but I think we're gonna maybe do a little.
Yeah, so we're gonna go ahead and do the streetlight presentation first, just to make sure we can get that one through in the event that we run out of time. Eric Winger's gonna kick us off with this, then Brian Alford's gonna, he's here to speak from OG&E with the work that we're doing in partnership to try to make sure we're addressing the streetlight issue. And then Chief City is also gonna speak to some of the issues we've got with law enforcement in relation to copper theft.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as we return today to update on the status of streetlights in Oklahoma City, our last update was in January, and we talked about a lot of different issues. And so I think what you're gonna find in the presentation today is we're gonna be able to update on the repair status. As City Manager mentioned, we do have representatives from OG&E, and also Police Chief Bill City that's here to talk about wire theft. I think as we get ready to open up, so much of what has been done in Oklahoma City regarding lighting has been a partnership, and so we've had a lot of city department involvement trying to get to the bottom of some of the issues. We're also working very, very closely with OG&E on the status of the repairs. And so as we get ready to go through the presentation, we're gonna talk about the city streetlights, we're gonna talk about the highway lighting, we're also gonna talk about the downtown P-180 lighting, the copper theft, and then also how to report on outages. So with that, we're gonna start off with OG&E this morning with Mr. Brian Alford.
Thank you, Eric. Before I start, just very quickly, I want to, she stepped out, but I wanted to thank both Councilmen Shadid, Councilwoman Salyer for their service. I hope they both feel they've left the city a better place. From one's resident's perspective, I believe they have, and I appreciate it, we appreciate it, OG&E. Brian Alford, 321 North Harvey, on behalf of Oklahoma Gas and Electric. What I'd like to do this morning is, Eric said, give you an update on where we are from a streetlighting perspective. I think it's something that has all of our full attention, and it's something that we're working diligently on. As Eric said, we are working in partnership, we're talking frequently, if not daily, on the issues that are confronting us. What I'd like to do is just to kind of first give you a sense, one of the questions that we more often get than not is, how big, when we talk about streetlights, what are we talking about? System-wide, we maintain about 300,000 lights across 30,000 square miles of service area. Here in Oklahoma specifically, as you can see, it's roughly 26,700, and of, and you add to that an additional 8,000 that the city owns, that OG&E maintains, those are primarily highway lights.
Brian, so those 26,000, those are, I watched, I re-watched Eric's presentation from last meeting this morning, so I'm, I noticed that we kind of glossed over this and I didn't maybe fully understand it. Those 26,000 are owned by OG&E? Is that a fair?
Yes, those are, those are lights we own, maintain, are responsible for.
So, okay, so.
That's within the confines of the city limits of Oklahoma City. Now, metro-wide, of course, that number will be larger, but those are.
Do we have some sort of financial responsibility for those 26,000? It's entirely, okay.
Yeah. So there's tariffs that are approved at the Oklahoma Corporation Commission for how we recover the cost associated with maintaining those lights.
So you own them, but we pay to maintain?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
And do you have a meter? Do you have a way of metering all of those lights?
Some streetlights, very few streetlights are metered. Typically, what will happen is, you mentioned the 3% franchise fee from OG&E. In addition, OG&E also provides a percentage of free service to the cities. And so what you typically see is the cities will use their free service allotment to offset that cost of those streetlights. But they are not, as I understand, they're not individually metered. We don't have, we don't have meters on circuits, but when you, you look at a streetlight, it consumes typically the same amount of power day in and day out. You calculate that by the number of lights that are there, you get to a total number of kilowatt-hours, and then the city can use those to offset the cost of those lights.
Is there a GIS, is it GIS? GIS map of where all these 26,742 streetlights are?
Councilman, there's not. As we transition to LED technology, we will use the mesh network that we've installed for our smart meter network across our footprint. The lights will have a communicating card within them that will communicate via that network, and so then that mapping starts to become possible.
Is there a GIS map of the 8,037 city-owned streetlights?
Now, that, we would have to ask ODOT. Simply, the vast majority of those lights are installed by ODOT along major highway arteries.
So is it, is it a true statement that we, we don't know where the 26,742 streetlights are?
We, you know, I don't know that to say we don't know, I mean.
The city, the city doesn't know, because the city has.
No, the city does not, but we have, we have tracking, but is there a map I could point you to that shows you all 26,000 that you have? No.
And you don't have any kind of metering of the streetlights that would tell you that electricity's not going to the light, so the light's out?
That's, that's correct. When you, when you think about reporting a streetlight outage, it's very much like reporting an outage 10 years ago on our system, when we had a storm come through and you lost power at your home. You had to give us a call and say, "Hey, I'm without power." As your neighbors did the same thing, we would be able to build an outage map and know where to send our crews and get them to the right place to make the repair. Today, that's still the type of system we have related to streetlights. We have to actually get a call from a resident or a customer or a business to know that a light has, has gone out. And then we put it into the system, create a ticket, and then start the process of making those repairs.
How long is the process for the repairs?
It will depend. I'll talk a little bit about that, but it depends on the type of outage it is. If it's simply a bulb or a ballast, it's a matter of days. But often, streetlights require that we do excavating, because much of the infrastructure is underground, that we have to get in and actually dig things up, splice repairs. Those are gonna take a little bit longer. But we have very specific targets that we give to our contractors that they have to meet based on the type of repair that they're making. And we'll talk more about that. And so I'm hopeful that I can answer that question a little bit more in depth, or at least, if you have other questions, we can, we can capture that then, if that's okay.
Brian, while we're inventorying the types of lights we've got out there, there's one seemingly major category that wasn't really mentioned specifically in the last presentation or on this slide, and that is lights on traffic lights.
Correct.
Which seem to be at virtually every intersection in Oklahoma City.
They are.
What are those?
Lights on traffic lights.
And I'm talking about, obviously, streetlights, not the red, red and green lights.
Right, right, right.
But the streetlights that are above the traffic.
We have a process in place that we work through with the city. It's, it's a, it's a joint, you know, project, if you will, when those lights go out, you know, because they're signaled, and sometimes the infrastructure to those lights, my understanding, actually is behind a panel that the city, we need to work with you all to get access to, to affect repairs. But typically, we'll work on those bulbs on behalf of the city. If it's a power-out issue, if there's a problem with the power to the intersection or to those lights, it's a little bit different, requires more coordination with the city.
But we own those.
Yes, you own those.
There must be thousands of those. So which, where are they in this, in this counting of 26,000 and 8,000?
They're in the 8,037.
So the 8,037 properly notes highway lighting, which is pretty important, probably the number-one most noted light in Oklahoma City, but also includes.
Intersection lighting, great point.
Which I've noticed have been.
Great point.
Pretty significant contributor to the outages. Okay.
To that point, we, we install major-minor streetlights across our footprint. That includes major arteries, neighborhoods, those types of places. On the highways, ODOT actually installs the infrastructure and will commission that to the city, which retains ownership of those assets. Now, before the commission, or before the city actually takes possession of those lights, they, they have to be in good working order for you all to receive them. But ODOT will commission those to you all, and then we actually will step in on the maintenance So I don't know if you all had a chance to talk about the extent of the damage copper theft has caused. You know, this is very reminiscent of an issue that we had in 2006, where we went through a very similar issue. At that particular point, thieves were actually cutting into our electric substations, they were chaining their trucks to underground copper ground wire to the trucks, and then the vehicle would physically pull that copper out of the ground, and they would, they would drag it off. You know, that created exponential problems. It just happened to also be in the middle of the summer, we would have widespread outages, you put people at risk. It was, but this is very akin to that. It's epidemic that we've seen this, and it was epidemic then. But the epidemic has now just taken on a different face. Wichita, Kansas has seen this problem, Tulsa has seen this problem, you know, we are, have now experienced this problem, and it's incredible. And what you see is, these folks will actually pull onto a highway, they will be in a vehicle that's marked as if it should be there, they may even have a flashing light on it, they will have individuals that will have safety vests on, and you'll have one individual that cuts one end of the line, secures it to a truck, and then you'll have another individual who may be 1,000 or 2,000 yards down the way, cut the line at that end, the truck takes off, there's a third individual that's actually sitting in the back of the vehicle, as they're driving down the highway, they're turning a spool to spool the copper as they drive. And it's, that's how we get to 70,000 feet, 13 miles, more than 13 miles of copper. So some of the things that we've done to help expedite or effect as much of these repairs as we can, as quickly as we can, we've looked across our footprint and said, "Look, anything that we have from an inventory perspective, we want to centralize to Oklahoma City." Because of the extent of this problem, we're also looking at reconductoring these lights as we have to come back in and make these repairs. We're transitioning from copper to aluminum. That has been helpful. It hasn't been foolproof. I will tell you, where we've affected repairs with aluminum, we've seen the same type of activity. They come in, they'll cut. This time, though, as they realize they don't have copper, they actually will just cut it and let it fall back into the road. But yet, we're still faced with the problem of having to come back and effect a repair a second time.
Excuse me, couldn't the city, and maybe join with OG&E, offer rewards to, you know, identify people that have been doing this? And Chief City, couldn't we step up the pursuit of this kind of activity?
We have a whole presentation.
Oh, whoa, 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 sorry, 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 sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we've had a very great working relationship with the chief. I think he's got some very positive news to share. But no, you're, you're right. We've been looking at a multitude of options and other means that we can bring to bear to help stem this, this problem. Real quick, just to give you an update, these maps are hard to read, I'll kind of just flow through it so you can see. Northwest, we still have one pending problem at Northwest Expressway in Hefner. On the north, on the north quadrant, you can see there that we have made progress. We've got four projects now complete, four are pending repairs, and there's really two different categories here. There's what we would call a theft repair that we're making, so the original cause of the outage was, was theft. There's also damage repairs that are being affected as well. So we've got four pending repairs on the damaged side, three complete on the, on the north side. West, you can see, making progress, we've made one, we do have three pending repairs. I will share with you that I-40 west of I-44 out to Meridian was repaired. My understanding, it was backed down again this morning, so we're gonna have to go back, we'll look at that, so, and see, see what the end result of that, that was. South side has really been hit rather hard through this, a number of issues that we've needed to address. We are affecting repairs, we're making progress, we still have work to go. But you can see there, I think the easier way to view these is via the spreadsheet that has the red and green, and kind of we'll tick down through each of the projects that we're working on and their current status. You can see there, these are the theft-related projects and their current status, and the timeline for completion. This is the damage spreadsheet, also with the same information, the location, and the time to, to effect the repair. So as we are going through the copper issues and making these repairs, and I'll, I'll say this too, that copper theft is not limited to our highways. We have smaller incidents across our footprint. It's, we've had unfortunately, a individual was, was killed in the process of stealing copper last fall. It's extraordinarily dangerous, but yet we can, we continue to see it. We saw it, very similar situations in 2006, but very dangerous, and we're working to, again, get on top of it. But as we're going through this, we're also beginning the conversion to LED. We've got a couple of projects here in Oklahoma City. If you want to see the net result of the transition, the Adventure District is an area I would encourage you to visit at night. I would also encourage you to visit the Innovation District, where we've also installed LEDs. We're also beginning a process of installing some, some one-offs across the city. The city of Bethany also has a significant stretch through, 66 through Bethany, if, again, to see the, the effect.
So outside of, setting aside Project 180, all this stuff, is anything being delayed because of an, of an interest in replacing it with LED? I mean, is any, is any swath of lights in Oklahoma City outside of downtown not being replaced right now and just being left dark for months at a time?
Mayor, the problem that we have at this particular point is, into the slide, as we, as high-pressure sodium and those products begin to become very limited in supply, we are going to see a bit of a delay between when we run out of the physical inventory of the existing lights today, and then when we get to them to affect. inventory of the existing lights today, and then when we get to them to effect the transition to LED. So, there may be some occasion across some areas where they may be out for perhaps a little longer, just because of the inventory issue. When we also, when we affect this change, when we make this change out, I wish it was as simple as going out and unscrewing an, an old bulb and screwing a new one in like we do at the house. But unfortunately, the way the system is designed, our system, is the existing infrastructure has a, a much higher voltage than LED requires. Thus, the benefit of, of LED using less electricity. So we have to physically go out and re-engineer these spans as we make these repairs, and step that, that voltage down so it can then take the LED.
Can you tell us some of the benefits of converting to LED? Why?
Well-
What are the positives?
The, the positives. One, you're going to consume less energy. Those bulbs are going to have a longer lifespan, ultimately require less maintenance. These lights will actually be interconnected to our, our mesh network, so we'll actually be able to see them. And when they do go out, that reporting will be real-time. So, you won't any longer have to have, to rely on a, a manual process to report that outage. We'll be able to see it, get it into a queue, and, and effect that repair.
But as far as the theft of copper, aluminum, the LED will not play any role with that?
No, the, the LED, you know, the, the transition to aluminum will, will help minimize copper theft. The LED transition will not. It, it just, it, it will become a cleaner light, from my perspective, more user-friendly from my perspective. You'll transition away from this traditional, I call it baby aspirin orange kind of light, to a more daylight-oriented LED.
Is there a timeframe that we will have transitioned away completely from copper?
We anticipate that taking approximately, or a transition away from copper. You know, I, I don't know that there is a hard and fast timeline. Now, not all wiring will be transitioned. Right now, we're going to focus on transitioning highway lighting from copper to aluminum, when we need to affect those changes. I don't know that we'll arbitrarily go out, just given the cost of going out and reconducting these projects. You know, what we'll focus on now is mitigating the copper theft, trying to limit the ways that individuals can actually get in and, and steal the copper. And ODOT's been very, very helpful in looking at additional options as it goes forward on its project.
So, Brian, going back to the list that was the, a couple slides ago, I mean, if I look at it, it looks like, yeah, now we got it up. It, based on where copper theft has occurred, I mean, it looks like you're thinking you're going to get everything highway-wise repaired by summertime.
I'm going to turn and, and double-check with my subject matter act. I do have Melina Moffett here, who's, who eats, sleeps, and breathes streetlights. So, that's the timeline. I'm going to confirm.
And now, what happens if theft continues to reoccur? I mean, are you, on all of these, you're putting in aluminum now exclusively?
So, on all of these, you are-
Come step to the mic if you'll, if you would, just so everybody can see and hear.
So, on all of these, we are replacing copper with aluminum.
Mm-hmm.
And we, for the completion in summer 2019, it's current known. So, as additional theft occurs, which it may or may not, the timeline will have to be assessed at that time, based on the extent of the damage. And we are going through and working with the city, as well as with ODOT, trying to partner up. We're putting stickers, other deterrents, other theft protection devices on where they're pulling the, the copper or the aluminum, the wire out. There have been instances where they've gone and tried to pull the aluminum, as Brian referenced.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, I certainly applaud your efforts on moving to LED. But back to the huge number of streetlights, those are non-metered, right? So, you have no idea which ones are on or off. So how do you adjust our bill every month for the ones that are off?
Pat, you want to take that one?
Sure.
Pat, do you have a little bit of insight?
Pat has a, has a greater insight on, on the billing issue.
There is not an adjustment. That's why it's imperative, well, as we move on to LED, that these type of situations won't happen. There's a flat rate per every light, based on 71 kilowatts or 41 kilowatts, so it varies. But, you know, opposed from the thefts that we've seen, over the last 10, 15 years, we've done a pretty good job of keeping the lights, based on the experience we had from some of the city employees, and some of the experience that we had within OG&E. Since then, we've kind of had an experience gap, retirements and whatnot, and then this rash of theft. So, that's really never been an issue in the past, and with the new technology, hopefully it won't be an issue in the future.
Question, Pat.
Yes, Mr. Mc.
Several years ago, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you led the charge to get some legislation passed up at the Capitol to go after people who were selling this stolen material. Is that not working?
I don't know if, I would think initially it did, because we, again, like Brian said, the 2006 theft that we experienced, there was a lot of, I think, progress made. I don't know if it's a lax of, of procedure, or whatever the case is, but I think Chief City's going to be able to tell you that if there was any lax from the recyclable people, that that's been addressed now. And I think it's, they'll be very cautious on who they deal with now.
I will say, there's, there's been some additional efforts, this legislative session, to, to strengthen those even further. So, I'm hopeful for that. But I'm not sure that it will, the legislation's going to move. But it had been, it'd been noted, and there was, I believe, a House member from Norman that was actually moving, moving the bill.
Your assistant mentioned theft protection devices. What does that mean? Does that mean they can't get into the copper with some devices?
Yeah, that, that would be it, limiting the access panel into the light itself.
So are we doing more of that? Is there plans to increase that?
We're, we've been visiting with ODOT. Again, you know, for some of these projects or ODOT projects, we would need to visit with the city about putting those in, if the city wanted to, to make that investment in.
Are they expensive, inexpensive?
I, I, I believe, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand they're about $400 per installation. So they're not cheap. Real quickly, just to give you a sense of, and Councilwoman, it's back to, to your question related to metrics. We have become much more effective in measuring our ability to get these lights changed, get them changed in an orderly fashion, and to provide metrics for both ourselves and our contractors. Today, we look at a all-in typical repair time of about 10 days. Thirty-two percent of, of tho, of, of those repairs that we do make are four days or less. And if you look to the far right, the, the tall orange bar is our on-time percentage. The blue is the gap that we still have yet to close. We're, we're not hitting 100% on our metrics, but we're getting close. We're continuing to push for improvement in those metrics. We've brought on additional resources, contract resources to help, again, with the issues here that we're seeing in Oklahoma City. So, we've, we've got the inventory, as much of the inventory as we can, we've brought in, and we've added additional human capital at, for the problem.
So, so, you know, it sounds like you're on top of it, right? And then, and yet, I get these continuing messages. I reported, and then I reported again, and then I reported again, and then I was told it was closed, and then I, but it was still out, and then I reported again. Where do I take these? Because obviously, I'm at a loss when I get these, these kind of comments and messages. Where do I take these? Can I maybe make a new friend today, and we start communicating?
No, you know, we've, we've had very robust conversations with the city about how we capture that collectively. Because of the issues of ownership, we understand that. We have made a commitment to begin meeting on a very regular basis, face-to-face, sitting down and walking through each of these situations. So, we all understand where we are, what the current state is, if we are having an issue, if there's going to be an issue, we understand what those are, and, you know, hopefully begin to deliver that information more real-time to you all and to our customers. The other thing that we want to do is look for opportunities to make it easier to report these outages through our website. And, you know, the city has done, the Action Center's done a phenomenal job in helping us capture these and get them into our system. You know, streetlights are, again, I think this is where the LED, the transfer, transition, having the communicating cards, communicating ability will come in very handy, because we'll be able to identify where a light is, what the situation is, and, and get it repaired.
Brian, what does that sitting down mean? Are you sitting down once a week? Are you sitting down once a month? Do we have a schedule?
As, as often as it will take. Right now, I think we're going to sit down once a week.
I mean, we, Eric has a group that meets with downtown Oklahoma City and City Manager's Office, and some, and they meet every Thursday-
Right.
-to talk about issues that are out there. I mean, I don't think it works to just say, we're going to get together, whatever. You know, you have to have a day and a date and a time and a commitment.
We don't have specific dates and times, but my commitment is, we'll sit down every week.
Let's, let's get that calendar.
That is going to be our plan, is to meet every week until we start to, I mean, once we see progress on there, and we feel like the issue's been addressed, it may not continue that way. But our plan right now, I think, would be that we'd be able to sit down and meet once a week and have discussions to make sure. Because there can be times too, that there's infrastructure issues that we need to address on our side that, that isn't being addressed, and we need to make sure nothing's falling through the cracks in the process.
Right. So, just to drill down, you guys have involvement in every single streetlight repaired that's happening in Oklahoma City on some level, or are there some that we are just fixing by ourselves?
Project 180 is-
Well, set that aside. Yeah, yeah. I know that's a different animal. Set that aside.
I know, I know there are some issues that we have, and Eric can talk about this when he goes through it as part of the presentation, but there are some parts of it where it may be infrastructure that we're responsible for. And I know there was one we were looking at, I think that you'd asked about at 122nd Heffner Parkway, that it sounds like there's some conduit that's been broken, that we have a problem, that's reinstalling some of the electricity that goes into that, because it affects the light signals as well. And so, we're in the process on that. That's one that's on us. Now, we'll have a contractor that does that, but there are some like that, where it's infrastructure related to the lights, where we have some responsibility.
So, so who's like the, the person that has their hand on, handle on all of this? When, when, so if I called her with that one, she would say, well, that's not actually our problem.
Well, and I think that's one of the issues, is that we're, that's one of the reasons we want to be sitting down right now and meeting regularly, because we do have communications between OG&E staff and Public Works staff on a regular basis. But we want to make sure that we're meeting and reviewing all of these issues to make sure nothing's falling through the cracks. And so it's one where OG&E is who we contact if there's an outage, but if it's something that we need to be addressing, that we work with them, work together with them to make sure we're not missing our part.
Now you're going to meet every week, so all, so nothing's falling through the cracks, I hear you. Okay.
Okay.
So is there a mechanism? And we have hundreds of city employees driving through the city on any given day. Is there a mechanism for them to report outages?
Yeah, they would have the same process. I mean, we could, we can handle that through, you know, bringing it back to Public Works, and we can call it in. But honestly, anyone, whether you're a city employee, or a police officer, firefighter, whoever it is, if you're out there and you see an outage, you can make contact with OG&E's, you know, with their reporting mechanism. Anyone can do that.
So how, how hard would it be to make a GIS map of all the 25,000 streetlights for the city employees?
That, I would have to, again, what we do?
Our, our map does have the lights.
I stand corrected. You want to explain what we do have?
So, we do currently have an ARC map, and essentially a GIS map, an ARC app. It includes not just the city-owned lights that OG&E maintains, but as well as OG&E-owned lights that we maintain as well. And, but what we're doing through LED is, we're trying to basically true-up that map. We're trying to make, ensure that it's, it's accurate. So, while we do have that to give you, there is some variance there. And it is included in our LED project as we move forward, to make sure that we have that, and we can account for every light in our service territory, not, not just OG&E-owned, but as well as city-owned that we maintain.
So, so can we, can the city have that GIS map?
I can determine how to print off a copy or obtain a soft copy, but it'll, it'll have to, we'll have to determine how to get it out of our system, because it is inherent to our system.
Okay, but there's nothing proprietary or stopping from sharing with Public Works where all the streetlights are?
I don't believe so, but let me follow up on that. And I do, I do think we could filter, and filter for only city-owned lights, only within Oklahoma City. And I think that that's more of what you're looking for.
Okay.
I have a question. After day 10, where does the accountability lie? On the, the
person that called that in, in the first place, or is it OG&E that contacts that customer to let them know? You know, we understand we haven't met that day 10, but we are still working on your issue, instead of the customer having to continually call back?
That, I, and, Melina, I'm going to turn to you as well. I, I want to ensure that we give you the right process. I think I know, but I want her to explain.
So, with my lighting team, I'm constantly looking at past due, and past due tickets, which would be that greater than 10 days. It does, it is contingent upon how the ticket has worked and the different processes. You know, we go out there and we do our, our first troubleshooting of it. It may need underground repairs. We may get the underground on and then determine that it's a different fix as well. There could be a culmination of fixes that are required. So, it depends on the process that it takes. But we do constantly monitor the overdue and the past dues, making sure that we minimize those and are on top of them as, as fast as we can be. So we, the short answer is, we as a lighting team are looking at those.
Are you contacting maybe the customer to keep them advised about the process and what's going on, instead of them having to call back and say, and report the issue again?
So, so I'm, when I'm able to, yes. It's, it's, like I said, it's a bunch of different situations. So it's not clear-cut in saying, yes, I absolutely contact them every time. When I'm able to make that connection with the customer, by all means, I do. And, or the lighting team does. But we can't account for 100% of them, just depending on the situation.
Thing I would add there too, is that oftentimes, the, the outage ticket is not tied to a particular customer account. You may have someone who, who calls in a particular location and lets us know it's out, but there's no formal tie back to that customer account. So we really don't know at that point who we're getting in touch with. So, but, you know, we'll get calls and say, hey, do you guys know you have a light out here and here? But we, we can't tie that back to the customer account. I believe that's, I'm still happy to answer questions.
I think at the end of this, Eric's going to talk about Project 180 license, and we'll talk about the copper theft too. But really, it's a partnership between Oklahoma City and OG&E, working together to try to address this issue. And, and we're all committed to staying on top of this and getting this addressed.
Very much so, very much so.
Thank you, guys.
So I think to just really kind of summarize, there are, there are a lot of lights in Oklahoma City, some which are owned by Oklahoma City, and, and many which are owned by OG&E. But the majority of the lights are maintained by OG&E, and so we do rely on those, those citizen inputs and those, those contacts to be able to service those lights. And there's a third category of light that was shown on those charts, which is an ODOT facility light. And so I just need to mention today that there are a few highway outages, specifically around the ODOT construction areas. This would be around either I-235, I-44, I-35, I-240, or now also at I-35, I-44. When construction occurs on those highway systems, ODOT and as a part of their construction, do take those lights that are existing out of service while they do that roadwork. So, it doesn't have anything to do with copper theft or an outage. It just happens to do with planned construction or reconstruction of a particular interchange. From an update, from where we are at, from what you were just shown and presented by OG&E since our January timeframe, about 50% of the work that's on those, on those OG&E wire theft have been completed. On the infrastructure projects, about 35% of those have been completed since we first updated in January. So there's been some progress, but obviously, total completion's not expected until later this spring and into the summer, as we finish the second half of all of that work. Took a little bit more comment on some of the council comments regarding theft. We are looking not just at the aluminum wire and at the stickering of- We are looking not just at the aluminum wire and at the sticker-ing of, of the poles to make sure that poles that are converted are clearly marked as having aluminum wire, hopefully to eliminate that theft. But, we are securing those copper theft box covers as a part of city contracting, and we did have a meeting with Oklahoma Department of Transportation to get their approval to install them on all of the ODOT highway poles as well. So, significant progress was made where originally that wasn't going to be possible. That is now possible, so we are in the process of contracting with and getting those covers sooner than later to get those on all the new installations. There is a one area of Project 180 that we discussed that is not an OGN E light. It's not OGN E-maintained. I mean, it is specific to Project 180. I mean, we do have a number of lighting outages that continue downtown. When we updated on this about a year ago, when we first had those first reports of widespread outages, we really had a lot of trouble trying to figure out what was happening. And what the end result was is that a lot of those early P-180 lights were coming up on their age. They're the older high-pressure sodium or the metal halide lighting systems that simply after five, six, seven years were starting to fail. We did an initial surge last year and replaced all those only to have additional lights fail. There are about 700 Project 180 lights in our downtown area, and they're in two categories. And so, I've kind of put this diagram together with staff's help. These are the totals that are starting to fail. We have 169 total streetlights that are going to be converted to LED technology, very similar to what we were just discussing with OGN E. We no longer can get the parts for that light that's on the very top of the pole. It's an older hardware system, and the manufacturer simply does not have the replacement parts. The good news is, though, they've had a replacement LED fixture. Council approved a contract with that vendor in December, and we're now receiving those upgrades to start those immediately. And so, there's 169 of those that we're starting to receive that product for and get those in place. The lower light, or the one that you see there on the middle of that pole, is actually an existing LED fixture, but we found a manufacturing defect with those. So, many of those are out, and sometimes, as Councilwoman had mentioned, they flicker. Those are being replaced 20 at a time. We're sending back the fixtures to the manufacturer to have them re-warranted, but they're basically replacing those. We have the similar schedule to have these all replaced by summer of 2019. So, LED upgrades, we do have some downtown outages. Some are very significant. There are also downtown a few that are due to construction. So, I think as part of presentations and things that you heard this morning about First National, as we start to work on some of the final P-180 packages where we're doing the streetscapes, we are having to take a certain number of lights out of service. One thing that we're recognizing is that even though we take a light out of service and it knocks out an entire block, whether or not we should be thinking about partially powering a block that is totally affected, is there a way to temporarily power it even during construction? And so, we're going to look at that opportunity.
So, Project 180 has approximately 700 lights, correct? Yes. Out of the 700 lights, how many are down right now?
Right now, we're estimating in this total of a little more than 200, possibly starting to approach 300.
And estimated time of repair?
So, right now, we're on the same schedule as OGN E to have those done summer of 2019. So, the ones that are at the top, and I'll kind of show, we were originally using our city street crews to do these repairs. We are finding that we can, cannot keep up with our existing crews, and so, we have recently received some quotes from some of our contracting partners in Oklahoma City. These would be vendors, electricians that are under current city contracts to help us expedite that process. So, we are making that change to supplement with contractors. This is what that LED upgrade looks like. So, the light will not look different when it's installed. We simply take the old hardware out of the light. We put the new hardware into the light, but with the numbers that we're talking about, more than 200, it's just a matter of taking some time to get into the downtown area to get those opened up and those replaced. And so, that's where the additional contracting crews are going to be most beneficial.
And then, with the 700 lights, we're not having a copper problem?
We are not having a copper issue in the downtown area, no.
Thank you.
Now, there will be some existing lights that will, are going to begin to fail. They're going to be in the later Project 180 packages that are the older technology. We plan to then upgrade them to LED as they fail. So, we will continue to order those LED products, make sure that we get those switched out, and we too think that after summer of 19, that we should not have this problem any longer. P-180 will also be complete.
Eric, Broadway, or Park, Broadway between Park and the Cox Convention Center's been a problem for years. Have you considered looking at lighting that in some different format?
So, we have. So, there is some final P-180 packages that we are installing, some of the newer LED lights, and it's just a part of Package 8 that's not 100% complete. So, a lot of the work is going to be finalized in the lights that we can upgrade, the old five-globe fixtures that are no longer functioning. We do have a few of those on the schedule to have those replaced, yes.
I mean, those are areas where we also had some private lighting that had some problems, but that is specifically the area where I've seen people walking around with miners' lights on their heads.
Yep. So, we are focused, and I too have driven the downtown area to see a lot of the dark blocks, and a lot of it either because of light outages that we discussed or due to construction. We're going to look to expedite some of the darker areas first as much as possible. And this is what that looks like. So, as we look at these, these areas around just the north side of City Hall, we have got pending repairs on about half of the area that's around City Hall and the Civic Center. When we look at the area around the Federal Courthouse, McGee, Kerr, the red is what's in pending repair. The yellow's what's currently in progress. And so, you can see our, we're wanting to expedite this as much as possible, and the additional contractors are what are going to help make that happen. This is the area that's around John Rex Elementary, around Mary Botanical Gardens, south of City Hall, south of Main Street, south of Sheridan. You'll see we're about 50% in this area right now. But then, as we go into the other downtown areas like Cox, everything in red is what is currently out. So, you can see everything north of Sheridan, including that Broadway section. Those are some of the not-yet-upgraded fixtures that you'll see on Robinson. We do not have that work completed on Robinson, Park, Sheridan, or even portions of Reno at this time. So, we recognize that, and again, we're going to be applying some additional forces. This next section, copper theft was a major item that had come up at the last presentation, and we did not have all the materials ready. Chief City has an update today on copper theft and some of the things that Oklahoma City Police have been able to offer.
Thank you, Eric. All my notes, I've written questions from you, so I'll try to get through some of those, and answer some of those for you. Besides the presentation, the next, go ahead and throw up the next slide. And I'm going to, I'm going to start the first, thank you, the first three bullets there where we've added a second position to metal theft unit, impact units, using them for targeted investigations, compliance, and then a proposed city ordinance. I'll go back to, pertaining to Councilman McAtee's question. Back in 2006, we did work to get state law changed so that it would actually make recyclers, the buyers, more responsible. Because really, I mean, we can't catch persons committing metal thefts very easily, but we can control what recyclers, recyclers can self-enforce, they can self-police themselves, but we have to hold them accountable. So, we got the state laws changed that made a lot of requirements statewide, and we wanted it statewide because it doesn't do much good just to pass city ordinances because they'll go outside our county to another city. And if it's not state law also, then all they have to do is steal here and go there. So, we worked very hard with, with state legislators to get some ordinances passed that would allow us to make recyclers really take a lot of, a lot of things they have to do, like a person has to provide an ID. They just can't buy from somebody they can't identify, and they have to take a picture of that ID, whether it's a state ID or a driver's license, some type of government ID, and they have to take a picture of that. So, we'll have that documented in case that, that stuff comes up stolen. They also have to take a picture of the items they purchase. They also have to have the person that's selling them sign a disclaimer that it is, they do own the copper and they're selling it, so that we can come back and hold them criminally responsible if they did sell something that we later find out is stolen. We do the same thing and has been in place for years with pawn shops. So, it's just a, it's just a disclaimer saying, "I do own this." There are certain items that we also passed on state law that said, "You can't, you can't buy certain items." I think catalytic converters were one of them at the time because in 2006, they were just through the roof. And so, few items were just absolutely, you cannot buy. By state law, you can't, you can't, recyclers cannot purchase four-gauge copper. And I believe four-gauge copper is what's in the light post. It's the heavier copper, so when they steal, roll up, and they're rolling it up, they like that because they're getting more money because it's heavier. There's more copper there than there would be from just stealing out of a home, which may be a 12-gauge or a 10-gauge copper. They have to get more of it for, for a lot less. So, they've become very sophisticated. Obviously, I think changing to aluminum is going to make a huge difference, and once they find out that it's aluminum there, I mean, it's not, they can't make much money on the aluminum.
Did you say, I'm sorry, it's illegal for the metal recyclers to buy what is being stolen from?
Four-gauge, yes.
And that's what's being stolen?
Yes, and I'll show you, I'll give you an example because we, we did, we did make, we've increased our enforcement, and I'm, I thank Pat for not throwing me on the sword here when he said, when we were talking about, when he's trying to answer Councilman McAtee, because I've talked to Pat about, we did have two. When we started in 2006, I assigned two full-time copper, just, just, just theft, metal theft officers because it was so extreme. Not just copper, but just all kinds of metal. And so, we assigned two people. Well, since that time in 2006, copper, I mean, it's all, it's all about how much copper costs. Copper was twice as much in 2006 than it is today. It's still, it's still valuable, especially when you're rolling up rolls of it down the highway. You're making a lot of money and it's still valuable, it's still, but it's not as, it went down as a result of that, but we were also very, very aggressive back in 2006 and '07 when we got the state law passed because we brought to the, to the council a companion city ordinance. So, we could write city, based on what the state, state law was, we have city ordinance where we could just issue citations to the recyclers in the city and not have, not have to arrest them and go through state charges. We can still file state charges on the four-gauge if a recycler purchases that.
So, how in the world have these people sold 13 miles' worth of four-gauge copper wire when it is illegal?
There's a lot of recyclers that will take it. And if you're, if you really, if you have a sophisticated operation, you don't necessarily have to sell it in Oklahoma City.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of states with weaker laws, and if you're going to take that much copper, it's worth it to drive to another state and sell it where, or maybe they have recycle, because what we had in like 2006, we had a lot of ma and pop recyclers. They would even come in from out of state and open up shop for, for the weekend because we didn't have, we didn't have requirements in place to document it, and all of that. So, like with pawn shops, we have, we have a program called Leads Online. And so, that's, that's all digital, it's all electronic, and they have to submit everything they sell and buy. Well, with, with the state law written the way it is and with our city ordinance, we can now require our recyclers to have that same program in place. It's free to recyclers. We can require them to have it in place and to submit all that to us electronically. Makes it much easier because we can do it electronically, and we can start looking for items that we know have been stolen. The other side of that is we're working very closely with ODOT and with OGN E because the important thing is it has, it needs to be reported. If we, if it's not reported, then if we don't know about it, then we can't check it. And so, we're going to, we're finding a mechanism, and we were, I was talking to Pat to talk about finding a better mechanism and making sure that, that kind of stuff gets reported to the extent of maybe even our officers in the field, if a light's out, have a mechanism in place where they can report that light to them, something they may not be aware of. Because it is a public safety issue if the light's out. So, there's a lot of things. If that explains, you know, kind of what you were asking, back in 2006, we did create a city ordinance and companion to that. But now, the one thing we will bring to you, and you can see up here where we're, a proposed city ordinance amendment that will include four-gauge, the thing that's left out of our city ordinance is, it doesn't include four-gauge. It will include 10, 11, 12-gauge, but it doesn't include four-gauge. The other thing the state law does and our city ordinance does is that if you're going to sell, if you're going to sell copper, you're going to sell certain items, you have to be a licensed contractor at some point, and you have to be able to show that. You have to say, "I'm a licensed contractor, a builder. I have this material on a regular basis." But then, they still have to go through and show ID, and they take, the recycler has to take those pictures. Well, none of this works if we, if we as a law enforcement agency aren't proactive and go out and check them. So, what was happening is, the city ordinance was still in place. Why I say Pat didn't throw us under the bus is because, because we dropped that down to one person, which was overwhelmed and couldn't be proactive in making those checks. Since this, and, and since this, we added another person back to that unit, and we are going to be proactive because the key is keeping the recyclers from buying it. It's not going to keep thefts completely down because, like I said before, they can sell in other places. But, we have to be more aggressive. We put more resources in being proactive and going out because as, if you can see, once we turn, let's go to the next slide. You can see here, we did a week-long compliance investigation. What we did is we, we solicited the help of our impact units and divisions to do some undercover work. They would go in and try to sell copper and do things like that. They also went in and did some compliance checks, and we had, we have 13 recyclers in Oklahoma City. Well, out of nine scrap metal dealers, we cited, we cited them for purchase of burnt copper because you cannot, no matter who you are, even with a contractor, you cannot sell copper. Copper has a wrapping around it that seals it. If that's burned off, then they can't buy it. In a lot of cases, the, the covering is, is really marked, and so, you can identify who the, who the owner of it is, or at least who the manufacturer is. So, we had purchase of burnt copper, we had purchase of street signs, and as I said before, we had purchase of copper greater than four-gauge. That's, that's strictly prohibited to purchase under state law. So, they were violating state law at that time. We're going to make sure we can also write them for a city ordinance, but we have that state law, and they were violating that. But, and they're going to continue to violate things if they can get away with it. We have to be more vigilant in requiring them, proper documentation. We have to be checking with them on a regular day basis. We had two people assigned in 2006 when things were epidemic proportions. We had, we really went out on a regular basis and developed relationships and checked them. If they know we're coming on a random basis, they're going to, they're going to be more apt to comply. Well, if they're not buying it, then the seller has no market, has no market. So, it slows it down. Like I say, it doesn't eliminate it. So, we have to do a better job of that. You can see here, we had a, so, we're doing more as far as, as actually providing information to the public about what the problem is through social media, tweeting, all types of things. And as a result of, of the social media, we had an Action Center report that was reported from a citizen that took a, just took a photograph of a truck loaded with metal. Didn't necessarily mean that was illegal. Turns out, it is. We know who the person was, has a history of metal theft. That property, all that's probably stolen metal, and that is currently under investigation. So, things we can do proactively also by helping, soliciting the public's help and things like that, putting stickers, once they go to the aluminum, putting stickers on the, on the poles is really going to help. Even without that, you know, bad guys and crooks, they figure stuff out pretty quick and know where to go and not what, not what to waste their time on. So, that's, that's an example of some of the stuff. If we're proactive, that was one week's time. That right there sends a message if they know we're doing it. We just, we, we just have to be more proactive, and we're putting more resources into it.
So, with undercover work, you went to 14 different dealers. Nine were out of compliance, and you cited them. What is the dollar amount of those citations?
I can't, I can't answer that. I can get that information for you. I'm not sure what that is. I mean, state, state law would be, would be much, much more, it'd be a state violation. And if it's a significant, if it's repeated offenses, because we want self-compliance by recyclers because they can do more of preventing that, they can do more preventing that than we can catching them.
I mean, do you, I mean, ballpark, like $100 or five, I mean, is it a deterrent, the dollar?
The dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a deterrent to the recycler, but it's a bigger deterrent if they know we're going to catch them multiple times. And a lot of it, a lot, if they're caught multiple times, they will end up being charged in state, which is a much bigger offense.
Do you think that council needs to look at the dollar amount to potentially increase it?
We can, we can look at that. I'm not sure increasing that dollar amount's going to have, have a huge effect, but we can certainly look at that. I mean, if it's significant enough, yes, I mean, it could be, it could be a deterrent.
Thanks.
But, the key is, is that we want to disrupt what they're doing, and it does, we don't see, what we don't see now is we don't see a lot of small fly-by-night operations as a result of the state law being changed. It really did help, because it does hold, the recyclers are the ones that have to be. And the Recyclers Association was very supportive, because legitimate businesses don't want the ma and pop businesses around, taking business away from them. They want us to enforce them. So, and this was a state initiative. We worked with the State Association back in, Recycling Association back in 2006 to get all that done. So, it's, but, we just have to, it's there, the laws are there. We just have to be more vigilant. And I'll just admit that we've dropped the ball to a certain extent by reducing our staffing and putting our staffing other places where we need to make sure we go back to what we were doing, so the recyclers know that we are doing it.
So, what do you want our citizens to do when they see something suspicious? Are they supposed to call Action Center? Are they supposed to call 911? Are they supposed to take a picture? This is on television, so maybe we can kind of communicate that message.
I tell you, with cell phones and pictures, having a picture's, you know, very, very valuable. And the Action Center's a good place to send that. If it's in, if it's in progress, if they see somebody pulling copper from somewhere, something that looks suspicious, then they need to call 911. We need to be on it right away.
So, an OG&E truck is pretty distinct. Like, that's, I'm going to assume that they can't paint a whole big truck, you know, orange and put a cherry picker on it. But if you see almost anything else working on streetlights in Oklahoma City, should you call 911? Should you take a picture?
It doesn't hurt to take a picture and send it to us, or, yeah, if you just think there looks, it doesn't look right, or it doesn't look like the right truck, you need to call 911. I mean, that's our job, is to go out and check, see who they are. I mean, that's, you know, I always encourage somebody that thinks there's something wrong, it doesn't hurt, call them and maybe perfectly legitimate, but that's what we're there for.
Have you actually, have you had a report in the last six months to a year of, have you caught someone red-handed on the job, taking copper from one of our streetlights?
Stealing copper, red-handed?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'd have to research. This is red-handed right here.
Right, right, right.
About as far as pulling it, that's, you know, that's very hard to do. I mean, they're really, you know, I mean, like, when they get out on the street, they look, most people think them as just, you know, workers. They try to look like workers, and wear the vests, and they do things, and they're pulling, I mean, normally you would think that's just normal.
Well, that's the thing. We keep getting people saying, "Well, this is impossible." They're doing it, they can't possibly be doing it out in the open. Well, I mean, obviously they are, so we need to be more vigilant.
Well, that's usually, people aren't suspicious if somebody's just acting normal.
You have some, you have a couple, yeah.
The next slide really quickly. Two recent activities, T-Mobile cell tower theft. Photographs were taken from the, from the theft were sent to metal recyclers. So, we took photographs of what was stolen, sent it to the recyclers and said, "Do you have this?" And they did. And we got, and because of the law the way it is, we have the person identified that did it, we were able to file charges on them. So, that's the importance of that law that was passed, is they have to be diligent about who they sell it to and make sure they document it. And that's why we were able to do that. Cox battery theft in this case, because batteries, you know, well, I can't remember exactly what they, what they carry in them, but they, you know, they get a lot of money for those. And those big batteries like that with Cox cable or OG&E, they had a GPS in theirs, and we were able to track it. We had officers that. When they reported it, we tracked it, and we were able to find out who stole it, find the merchandise, and then file charges on them. So, there's a lot of different ways to do that. And again, if we know that there's a pattern, if we have a system in place where we're getting the information, either from OG&E, ODOT, or from Public Works, we just have to coordinate, you know, our communication a lot better. Because if we know there's a trend, not only can Public Works or OG&E also identify that trend, but we can too. And that helps us, because there's a lot of things we can do proactively if we know there's a pattern or a certain area that's being hit.
So, Craig, Eric, the mayor's driving home tonight, and he gets to 122nd Hefner Parkway. He sees a light out. What's he supposed to do? Call the Action Center? What's the best way to report this?
I think the best way to report outages is on this next slide that goes to, the reporting of outages through OG&E, because they're going to be the leader in most of that. And if there's something that's related to us, they can contact us.
And if Action Center does receive a call, is that information forwarded to OG&E by the Action Center?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I think as we just wrap up, the final slide that we did have for you is on the reporting of the outages. And so, because the majority of the streetlights are maintained by OG&E, you have two options. You can go to OG&E.com. If you have an account, you can actually report the outage there. You can also call this telephone number that we have on the screen, 272-9741. When prompted, say outage, and then say light or dial 6. And so, with that, you can report those. Partnership between Oklahoma City and OG&E, should they find that it's a city-owned light, they will forward that automatically to Public Works, so that we can go ahead and get that addressed as a city-owned light, predominantly like a P-180 light that might have been accidentally called into OG&E. But vice versa, should somebody call the city's Action Center line, we too, if it was an OG&E light, we have the ability to get that information forwarded to OG&E very quickly for the repair.
So, does OG&E convey this information to you daily, weekly?
You know, we have staff on both sides. I would say that the day that it occurs, I mean, we're conveying it that day to the proper organization. So, if we find that it was reported to one and not the other, we'll have that happen. So, our Traffic Operations Division, which does all of our streetlights, they also do new streetlight requests, are the ones that communicate regularly with OG&E. The final slide was just a wrap-up slide, is just talking about the schedule, and I think we mentioned this just a couple of times. On the copper theft, most of those repairs are anticipated to be completed by August. On the damaged infrastructure, again, by summer. Those would be the areas that were the copper thieves, have damaged the infrastructure, and we do have city contractors working on those. When I mentioned the ODOT construction projects, there's a number of those projects that I mentioned, interstate projects that are not, they're not scheduled for completion until next year. So, those lights will not come on before that construction's complete. But the P-180 lighting also is on a summer completion schedule. You should start seeing some of those areas repaired and lights starting to be restored. It's not as if all of them are going to be restored all at once, and magically all the lights are going to appear. So, you should see some progress very quickly if you have not already. But with that, we can answer any additional questions you might have.
Craig, I mean, I think I speak for the council. Do you have the resources you need? Because, I mean, we want to be responsive to this, if you feel like you have.
Yeah, I believe that we do. I believe that we do. There's a few things that I think that we can do just administratively, and the way that we're doing our communications, that I think will improve this. But all of us are certainly focused on this. And I think if we get to the place that we see we need someone else, I mean, Eric and I have talked about, what you and I discussed, of having, making sure we have someone that's a point person on our side, that they're focused on streetlights and where their primary contact. I think there's a few things like that that we can just do within our current staffing. But if we see that we get to a place that we need additional staffing or additional resources, we'll certainly bring that back to the council.
Well, the expectation has really been left here today that by summer, and I recognize summer goes all the way to September, but that by summer, we're going to basically be at a much better position. I mean, they'll, you know, streetlights never stop going out, but not at this epidemic levels that we're at. So, if we're sitting here in October, and that hasn't changed, I think we're all going to be disappointed. So, I think let's stay on top of it. Will we continue to have presentations?
Yes.
In the weeks ahead?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Craig, if they give you a GIS map of all the streetlights, is that something we can put on the city's website for the public?
Sure. I mean, if we've got the information, we can put it out. We want to work with them and make sure of what we're putting out. But yeah, I think if, as long as we have the information, we can make it available.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Thank you to our friends and partners from OG&E. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Chief City. Mr. City Manager, do you want to finish up City Manager reports, and then maybe we'll go back to the bond issue?
Yeah, so on the City Manager reports, we're going to postpone the Better Streets presentation again. The other thing-
Not again, this was its first time on the-
Actually, it was our second time.
Oh, no.
I missed, I'm sorry. I thought you were wrong. So, it's our second time to do that, but we will bring it back to you in a commitment that we'll get that completed. We also have the March sales tax report. And really, the point there, I think, is that for the general fund, the sales tax in general was down 2% from last year. So, we missed target on the budget, but we were down 2% from last year overall with sales tax. Within the general fund, just because of the reallocations with the new taxes we converted last year, is actually down 4%. So, we felt, we actually got to the place in the general fund, we're on sales tax below target now. And so, it's one for us to really look at, to make sure that we're not looking at just an anomaly here. You know, Russell's cautioned that we're going to see a slowing in our sales tax growth in the second half of the year. We didn't expect a decline. We've seen, I think this is the first time in 22 months that we've actually had a decline, so it's something that we've really got to be aware of. And even if this isn't a sign that we're going to see declining sales tax, I think it certainly is the indication that we're going to see it at a lower level of growth than what we've had in the past. So, we'll continue to monitor this going forward. Still in a real good position with use tax, have been very strong with, especially with the internet sales tax that we've been receiving, and actually, we receive it as a use tax, but that's still provided a great performance for us in this year. So, still well ahead target when combined sales and use tax. But we did see that first month of decline, it's something that we've got to monitor.
So, Craig, so on the OG&E, so do we get, we get 3% of all their sales in Oklahoma City?
Yes.
And that goes where, the general fund?
It's in the general fund, yes. So, we have franchise fees from Cox, you know, for cable, for ONG, for the gas, and for OG&E. It's one of our largest sources of revenue when you get outside of sales and use tax.
About how much, do you know the?
Do you know the number on that? I'll have to get that for you. I don't know the exact number. I looked at ONG last week, because we were having a conversation on that, and it was like $6 million. And I know OG&E is more than what ONG is. I would give you a guess, but we might be able to get something here pretty quickly.
Okay. So, they just tally up how much, all their metering, citywide, what they charge for that, and 3%?
Right. It's 3% of their gross revenues, and it identifies what's included in those revenues. 3% of that comes back to the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that concludes City Manager reports. Let's now move back to, as earlier promised, to item 9G1, 9G2, 9H1, 9H2, and we'll take them in order.
So, Kenny is back now to speak to us about these. Again, it divides the two sales, between the gold sale, which is the taxable, and then the GO sale, which is the tax exempt. So, we'll let Kenny present our results.
Yeah, sorry for the delay. I just wanted to keep our two council people around as long as we possibly can. On item G1 and 2, that's the gold sale. So, we were selling 30 million of our 60 million that was authorized in the 2017 gold bonds. So, that will leave, you know, we're selling half of that.
Thanks, Daniel.
Happy to report, we received 10 bids. Our final interest rate on that was 3.25%. Purchased by Raymond James. So, again, want to remind that our AAA rating was affirmed by both Moody's and S&amp;P, so that definitely contributes to the good rate that we got on that. And we'll be closing on those May 7. Items H1 and 2 is the $75.6 million of GO bonds. This is our regular tax-exempt infrastructure bonds. We also received 10 bids on those. 2.88% interest rate, so very, that was bought by Morgan Stanley. And both of those, both the gold and the GO, are both 20-year bonds. So, those are just really outstanding rates, especially in this market environment. Those will close on May 7 as well, so that's when the funds will be available. So, one thing I do just want to say about item H, the, on the GO bonds, is that 75 million is what we're selling, that we sold this morning. 44.4 million of that was from the 2007 authorization, so this completes the sale of the 2007 authorization. So, that doesn't mean all the projects are done, but all the bonds have now been sold for the 2007 vote. So, 31 million came from the 2017 authorization, so we have about 832 million left in our 2017 authorization that we'll be selling over the next eight years or so. So, with that, I'd be happy to-
Those 2007s before the-
You're welcome. Take any questions if you have them.
So, I want to point out on, it's labeled as item 91I.
Yes, it should be G, you're correct.
And it should be G. So, just to make sure, just the one that we handed out on the memo.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Kenny? If not, we'll start churning through the four items here that we've got to approve. So, 9G1 is the award of purchase of the $30 million City of OKC GO limited tax bonds. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9G2, this is an ordinance on final hearing with an emergency, providing for the issuance of GO limited tax bonds in the sum of $30 million, et cetera. I'd take a motion on this. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Oh, is that a separate vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'd take a motion on the emergency as well. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're at 9H1. This is a word of purchase of the $75,655,000 City of OKC GO bonds, Series 2019, et cetera. Take a motion on this. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9H2, ordinance on final hearing. This will require an emergency vote afterwards, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the sum of $75,655,000 by the City of Oklahoma City, et cetera. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Whoop. I want this, no, I want this motion to come from Councilwoman Salier. And I would like the second to come from Councilman Shadid. A man of principle till the end. All right. We've got a motion in a second. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are done with our votes, but we do have item 13, Citizens, to be heard, and we had two who signed up. DeVod, if you wouldn't mind just properly pronouncing your names before. David, okay. If you'd state your full name and address, or at least first-
David Matpore, 1301 West Hefner Road. I just wanted to say, I was coming, I was reading through Twitter this weekend about the whole light drama thing. And after Shadid's talk, it was kind of eye-opening, but I clicked. I was coming in off of I-40, took an I-40 under 35, and the lights were out there. And I decided to drive around downtown to see exactly what lights were off. And it was concerning to me, because, you know, you'd figure there's a couple here, but there's stretches of them off, where there'd be Project 180, the red lights. And then what was really concerning to me is, I went to exit downtown to go on the Oklahoma City Boulevard, and all those lights were off. It wasn't just one or two, it was, that stretch on the west side of Oklahoma City Boulevard, or the west part, are completely off. And I know that a lot of people are saying, "Well, it's copper theft," or hardware. And it's just, to me, as an Oklahoma City citizen, you know, I live off Hefner and Western, and, you know, I've been told that, you know, a lot of times, not through councilmen, but through other people who've been here a long time, that, "Oh, well, we have to work on downtown, because downtown used to be Crack Row," or whatever. And, you know, I push a lot of people like, "Well, I hope, you know, with the Maps, future Maps vote, we can see more projects, you know, outside the urban core, to where I live, to where I'm not hitting potholes every time I drive to the grocery store, to work, or, you know, regardless." And it's disconcerting to me in that, you know, when people like me, we bring up the stuff, you know, what issues we're having in my district, or we're having in my area, we're like, "Well, we can't have a strong city without a strong downtown." You know, we have 620 square miles to maintain, and, you know. And I'm always like, "Well, okay, we have 620 square miles, and," you know. And I think it's kind of like a slap in the face to us up there, that we're continuing, like Mr. Ed Shadid said, you know, "Are we keeping the sales tax rate low, artificially low, so we can have Maps projects?" These Maps projects are primarily located downtown. You know, and I did listen to this presentation of OG&E, and I have to admit, I am one of those people who really can't see somebody rolling up 13 miles of copper wire without the cops seeing something. But I just want to be heard in that it's concerning when I see on Twitter or social media, when people say, "Well, we hear your concerns, but we have 620 square miles to maintain." To me, that's saying, "Well, you live in those miles that we really don't care about." I was driving, I was driving there, and then I decided to go off Hefner, you know, and driving up Hefner Parkway. There was lights out in construction zones, which OG explained. But my main concern is, you know, we're told that, and then we have somebody who dies off of Claussen Boulevard, which I know they're still seeing what cause of or whatever, but, you know, I have to say, there's been times where I've been driving around downtown, or Claussen, or just in the urban core, and I don't see the bicyclist at night. They're not wearing reflective clothing. And I don't think it's their fault themselves, it's just that we have streets where the lighting's out, and you really can't see anything unless you're right up on the bicyclist, or the person who's crossing the street. And so, when I hear like this lozefer ad to tours these streetlights, you know, my concern is, is are we giving people a deadline? I'm saying, "Okay, you need to fix these streetlights by this time. You need to have these lights lit up by this time." Because, you know, we're told, "Well, we need to focus on downtown with the Maps projects." But like the gentleman said, the Project 180 lights are coming due at age, are they being replaced, you know, quickly? And that's my main concern, is, you know, we have somebody die, and we have all this. Well, how are you going to ask us to vote on Maps 4, or these capital projects, when it seems like we can't even take care of the projects we have now? You know, yes, downtown, we worked on, but when I'm driving downtown, and I'm seeing all these lights out, especially, and what was really shocking was, the Oklahoma Boulevard lights were all out on the west side, not just a couple, they were all out. It was really dark. And I'm just like, "Well, this is supposed to be an up-and-coming thing. We're supposed to be finishing it."